Mr. Chairman, we should be ready to go. You'll notice before you have a copy of an amended agenda which will include the election of officers. When it comes to time for approval of the agenda, we'll need a motion to amend and approve. Other than that, Mr. Chairman, the floor is yours.
Thank you. We'll get started at seven on the nose. Cora on the room?
Kimberly Watts.
David Schwartz.
Jill Plamper.
Rick Poland.
Sheldon Cone.
Jeff Janks.
And Mike Wright.
And Jellingberg.
Sorry, Jellingberg.
First on the agenda is approval of tonight's agenda. Do you approve?
Move to amend.
Oh, I'm sorry. Accept the amended agenda?
Second.
All up here?
Aye.
Opposed? Approval of minutes from November 24th. Twenty-fifth, I'm sorry. Anybody have anything?
Mr. Chairman, I did want to point out that I did, because they're videotaping this and that's how they're taking the minutes, I did want to point out that the city clerk, who's the one that's doing it, there wasn't a whole lot of commentary that I might have had in the minutes, so it doesn't necessarily reflect a lot. She and I have talked about that. She's going to put more of what I'm saying into the minutes.
Okay.
Because a lot of it doesn't make as much sense. So having said that, there was your own comment I wanted to make about that.
Great, thanks, thank you.
I think just one typo, the bottom of page one, third line from the bottom. I think "the" should be "they" recommended.
Correct. I will have it correct then.
Okay, motion to accept the minutes as amended?
So move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm abstaining. I wasn't here the last week.
Sheldon? Okay. First up, we've got matter of site plan review for proposed addition at the Herkowitz residence at 13336 Winchester. Is that you?
Hi.
Hi, how you doing?
Randy Herkowitz, Stacey Herkowitz. We're looking to do a small addition in the back of our house of a bathroom along with updated.
Aren't those brick walls pretty big?
So as you can see in the back, we want to add the bathroom in the back where to to...
Where the original bump out is.
Yeah, where the original bump out is and just match up the rest of the siding that continues throughout the front and the back of the house.
Is that bump out there or are you adding it?
We have a first layer bump out.
Okay.
And we're just putting a master bath on top of that.
Okay, that's what I couldn't tell you. Okay. Anything else before we get to Hank?
I think one of the issues was regarding the siding and I just wanted to say I have, I don't know if you need it or not, but I have pictures of a lot of different houses that have siding in the back, so I just wanted to say I have that as well.
Okay. Hank, anything to add on this?
Sure. Basically, this is a real small addition. They're basically just getting a master bath, a second floor bathroom over existing space. So there's no more lot coverage. You're not taking up any more space. There's no infringement on the setbacks or anything like that. It is a fairly small lot for the R-1D district, but they are under their maximum house size. Even if you take a look at the other character bonuses in that, 1856 plus, they're not anywhere near their maximum house size by right. So having said that, there's a couple of different things that you want to take a look at is the elevations. They are using siding. Siding, again, as you know, we've come to term as architectural relief and diversity of materials. So depending on what it is, and just for clarification on that, are we doing vinyl or what kind of siding were we using? It was vinyl, correct? Vinyl.
We have a sample.
And there is vinyl on the house, correct?
Yes.
So they're matching the existing is what that is all about there. Other than that, you have a colonial, again, with the corrected siding, the maximums house size it hints without including any bonuses, meets all the bulk regulations. And it falls short on fenestration on the one wall and it does lack some details with respect to window sizes and materials that should be clarified, but the windows could be scaled out in the, in if the one wall that doesn't have any fenestration whatsoever could be a topic of discussion for the planning commission. Other than that, if I may correct, I'd be happy to answer them.
Okay. Anything else to add? All right, we'll open up for public participation. Seeing none, we'll close it. Jeff, I want to start with you.
No comments.
Okay.
I'm good with the plan. I don't have any problems.
No comments?
I just see that the one wall that doesn't have any windows in it is essentially a bad question.
Yeah.
That's correct.
Understanding. Something you agree about that.
I agree. I have no issues with that particular wall. Do you think we need to know the window size before we approve anything now, right?
They should have that information. It wasn't on the plan, so. I don't have that on me right now, but we can pretty much figure that out.
We'll make them whatever size you need. Estimate them.
Well, that's one opportunity for innovation. I mean, pretty open for, for us to make whatever size we want.
They have the windows on the plan, but it doesn't state the sizes.
Well, here's the thing. I mean, those actually look like 2.6, I would say, they look like they're 2.6, 3.6 slider or double hungs. Is that what they're...
On the back elevation?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, so...
So those would be 2.6 wide, 3.6 long in height. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay. And then for the one elevation, we don't have any. For the other one, is that the same size?
So on the west wall?
It'd be the left elevation is what you have on the label.
So that doesn't say anything on the, I can't recall that one.
It just says new.
Size of the new.
So it's pretty open.
I guess if, if they were to determine the sizes on the windows, they're representing the 2.6 and the 3.6 on the site and then it appears that that window is similar in size to what you have on the rear elevation, then is that what you're representing? That would be 2.6, 3.6?
Yes.
Okay, then you're representing that if it meets any codes or anything like that and has a contempt that you will comply with that?
Correct.
Should we make that part of the record for this plan, Hank?
But we pretty much just did, but you can put it in the motion if you would like to.
That was all I had.
I have no comment. If I'm reading the plan correctly, Hank, I think on the interior plan, it looks like those windows might be 2454. It's a little smaller.
That's case that they're two...
A little smaller than what they just described.
Well, actually, they're two by the 3.6.
Yes.
3.6, so...
Yeah. And with the...
They're on the floor plan now and they're on the reflected ceiling plan.
In terms of the fenestration, I get it. There's a bathtub. I am wondering, though, if you gave any consideration of wood to flipping the side the tub is on because the side, the right elevation that doesn't have any fenestration in the addition, is on the side of the house where the existing fenestration is already slim.
I believe due to the small space, it needed to be constructed that way, but...
Just with plumbing and things like that.
Yeah, but me not being an architect, I can't confirm that.
Yeah, I don't know. We'd have to talk to the architect to see. To me, I, it doesn't, yeah, I was gonna say, it doesn't matter. It doesn't matter. Yeah, yeah.
I don't know if you know that at all, Hank?
I don't.
Typically, what they do is if there's a stack already there...
Oh, where the stack is, yeah.
So wherever the stack would be, would be what they would relocate, but typically they'll take the stack would be closer to the toilet, which would be on the outside wall. And then that'll handle the heavier load if it's against the toilet and then the bath sink and that. Or they could even put the stack on the wall since the floor below it is a proside porch type of thing. You could relocate that if you had to. But if they're doing that, they did that ideally, the sink is in the middle, so it's going to be in the middle no matter what. If you flop the plaza plans for the toilet, you flop the...
I don't think I have anything further to add. Anybody have a motion?
Well, can I get some clarification on what we're going to require or suggest as part of the motion in terms of supplementing what's missing on the plans? In terms of, A, window sizes and I, it's not clear to me whether the consensus was for the addition of a window on the right elevation, was it? I don't remember.
Mr. Chairman, if I could suggest using the dimensions on the reflected ceiling plan, which is not where you would normally find them, but they adequately represent what would be there, it was very close to what we talked about anyway, so...
Okay. I think the flip-flop of the tub was a more kind of suggestion than anything else, right? So we could certainly put it in a motion if we wanted, but...
I would suggest that you prove it as drawn if you're inclined to do that, if only for the reason that if you take the tub out and flip-flop it, then the other wall is going to be the wall without a window. So unfortunately, by virtue of the design, it's just, it's just one of those situations where you have such a small space that you don't have a whole lot of room to work with, right?
All right, I'm going to suggest that we approve the plan as drawn, subject to the specification of the windows. I think it was on the rear side.
Yes.
2.6 by 3, by 3.6. And the addition of the window on either the wall where it's shown a similar sized window or on the opposite window if they decide to flip the plan. That's fine with me. Is that the only conditions we talked about?
That was what was discussed or brought up by the planning commission. It allows them the flexibility of doing that without coming back.
Yes. That's the point.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Congrats. Thank you. Next, we have matter of site plan review for a proposed addition at the Cuchard? Say that right? Residence at 13312 Vernon.
So what we'd like to do is turn our effective one and a half car garage into a full two car garage so we can both pull in. The addition would be an extension of the garage towards the house. Currently, there is a covered breezeway that connects the house with the garage and we just want to move the garage over three and a half feet so we can fit both cars in and extend the breezeway forward so we can fit our lawnmower and, you know, the boys bikes.
Okay, thank you. Hank, anything to add?
Okay, so basically, and again, I know Mr. Cuchard and I had some discussions about the type of plans that these are, so it isn't as difficult for what he's doing, but again, I did want to point out that these plans would not get him a building permit. So it might be good enough for our purposes. What we're looking at here is a plan where he's actually taking the garage to increase the garage square footage, is taking the plan over to the right side and by doing that, he's also creating another wall there and the wall there would be used for storage. So when he comes over to that side, he's going to be taking up some of that space and it's a real small space. It's existing right now. The house is already connected to the garage. So what he's doing is simply just adding to that. Hold on one second. If you take a look at these drawings which were provided for you this evening, and you take a look at the red outlined area, that's the area of construction that's in there. So that's the area that's going to work on it. And you put the transom window in there to break it up a little bit. I'm not quite sure what on the bottom right the detail for that is, but it's, I mean, it's, he's moving over, he's getting more space in the garage and he's using the garage door, which is a 16-foot door, but it allows for room on each side. The room then becomes equidistant, makes the garage more balanced. But other than that, that's really all he's doing. It's as simple, it's almost like he's moving over, it's like one wall and roof, roof line that's being constructed there. And again, the plans don't really tell the whole story for what it is, but he's, if you take a look at the floor plan that he's provided for this area, he's showing that he's balancing that out and centering the garage door to gain the additional space and then he has the storage space there that he's adding the transom window to. Other than that, if you have any questions, I'm sure that he would be happy to answer any of those that you have.
Okay, thanks, Hank. We'll open it for public participation.
I got one question perhaps. I live next door on the left side and currently the garage...
Good, I'm sorry, could you state your name and address?
Yeah, Ray Fraser, 13320 Vernon. Currently, I get a lot of drain water from the ducts he has on his current garage. I'm just a couple of feet away and that comes over and sometimes causes my basement to get damp in the one corner, but my concern would be with this addition, that's going to increase the amount of water that drains over onto my side. Technically, I've been over this issue with Hank in the past and the building inspector and it's pretty much been declared a non-issue or one that they, they don't deal with. There is a zoning ordinance that says you've got to route the water away from, you can't route it into the neighbor's yard. And basically, when it rains heavy, it comes into my yard. I dug what I consider somewhat of a ditch to try and redirect that, but I do have a bit of a concern that with a larger garage, I'm going to get bore-walled. It's probably a minor issue.
Okay. All right, thank you.
I wouldn't request that perhaps he consider in this addition, I mean, some of that downspout water go towards the front or the back of his yard like it should.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, we close for public participation. Kim, you want to start?
Oh, sure. If I'm following this plan correctly, it, the roof line is not changing the level, you're just extending it out closer to the existing house. That was really my only question there.
It appears to me that the only thing that's changing is he's going more towards the inside of the property, not the outside of the property.
And then changing the door on it.
Right.
I don't have a concern with that. I don't have a concern. I actually think it looks really nice. I like that you use the brick, you know, to enclose all of it to keep it kind of uniform. I'm just wondering on this new drawing you gave us tonight, like, do you know what that is showing on the...
So we have an exterior faucet right there, so it's a little five-by-five pad and then that's just three-quarters sawing just to cover it up a little bit.
That exists currently?
It does not. So it would actually be like kind of breaking it off and hiding the faucet.
If there's some kind of fence in the front yard, then we have to, we'll have a separate discussion about that.
Okay.
It may be easily accomplished by adding another armpit or by adding more.
Yeah, no, otherwise I think it's great.
No comments?
So, okay, so you're not taking the garage down, you're simply closing in what's currently a doorway and pulling it over. So not changing anything on the exterior structure of the garage except where it is between the garage and that breezeway? That's the only thing that's changing?
We want to take down the vinyl siding and put up the hardy cement.
So are you doing that on the, on all the way around the garage or taking down that vinyl siding?
Yeah.
Okay, so my question I have is, so one whole side of that garage is just siding that faces your neighbor?
Mm-hmm.
No windows in it at all? Have you given any thought to putting a window or two in there?
Due to privacy with the street, we weren't too excited about.
It's a garage, so, you know, privacy, I'm, it's, it doesn't face the street. I mean, it faces your neighbor, correct?
Yeah, it does.
So just, I'm just wondering if, just since you're taking siding down anyway, have you given any thought to breaking up that big wall of siding with something?
We, we're not really looking at that and there are a couple of bushes that kind of block that view. If you go on the last page with the pictures.
Yeah, I was thinking that there's a big question.
You can see it, yeah.
Understand, but it's just a question I wanted to ask of you since you are taking the siding off anyway and changing it out with something else. So the neighbor, just out of curiosity, the neighbor that spoke, if I'm looking at your front northeast, he's the, as I look at this picture, he's the house to the left?
Correct.
So there is some space between your garage and his house?
Mm-hmm.
And do you have, just out of curiosity, again, do you have downspouts coming down and are they heading, keeping the water on your property or is it pointing it toward the neighbor?
They do point out towards the neighbor.
They do? And are you replacing those gutters and the downspouts and stuff as you, you're taking them down, you're redoing the siding?
Right, we would put...
Have you thought about redirecting them?
Yeah, if you look at, on the elevations, there's the little note G where we do say that we direct that away from existing structures down in the bottom left corner. Sorry.
This is underground extensions for drainage on west elevation. It doesn't say which direction you're pointing them.
The intent was to move them away from the neighbor.
What does underground extensions refer to?
A drain pipe, you know, just...
No, no, I understand that. So are you burying the...
Yes.
Can you do that? I don't think you can do that. You've got to...
You can do it, but it has to go to a pop-up.
Has to go to a dry well.
Either dry well or come to a pop-up in a different location that it's not going to, so...
Right. So where are those going to come out?
So it would come out in front of his house, you know, so it would send out towards the front.
Next to your driveway?
Yeah.
Pointing toward his house or pointing toward the street?
Towards the street.
Okay. I, this is what I'm trying to get to is, because right now they're pointing toward his house and now you're saying you're going to put them down into...
Yes, we would connect them together.
Extension, it's going to come out pointing down toward the street, not on your driveway, but onto like your, your sidewalk?
Yeah.
So directing the water away from his house?
Correct.
I'm just trying to address his concern with how you have it designed here. All right, those are my only comments. I, I would just simply say it would be nice if you broke up the big wall of siding since you're taking it down. It's just a suggestion. That's it.
It looks like you're adding a overhead door in the back of the garage. Is that correct?
Correct.
And that's allowed?
Typically, what people do when they do that is it allows them to get like a riding lawnmower out the back and, you know, that'd be, that's typically where they store that kind of material.
And what type of door is it?
It'll be aluminum-faced insulated with a glass window to get a little more lighting.
I agree that I think on the side, there has to be something done to add windows or break up that side of the house, especially since it's ground level to the roof peak siding. So it looks like you're using like a transom window in other areas. Perhaps that could be added. You wouldn't lose your privacy then if it was towards the top.
Yeah. I'm just not happy with the plans. I don't think they sufficiently call out or accurately call out the materials on the front side. I don't know if that's all brick or what it is. Is the front side going to be brick and the other three sides hardy or what? Or is it all going to be hardy?
No, the whole entire front will now be brick, including that little wraparound with the five foot where our exterior faucet is. And then the other two sides would be the hardy.
All right. That connector piece that's currently between the house and the garage, does it have its own drainage or does it just piggyback on the...
It connects to the garage.
Pardon me?
It connects to the garage.
Okay. Just curious. I don't, I'm not enough of a fluid engineer to figure out whether that means more or less or different amount of drainage. Anyway, that's my comment. I'm not, not that thrilled with the drawings and that sort of ambiguity leaves an opportunity for misunderstandings between the plans and the building department and the permitting and that sort of stuff. That's, that's... Thank you.
Thanks, all. Jeff?
Yeah. Hank, we're not allowed to have French drains?
Sure.
It couldn't drain into a French drain?
Yeah.
I would like to see you consider strongly in the front of your house, one of these 10, 20-foot pits that's filled with gravel that basically is covered with grass for the most part, no one knows it's there, but it resolves that flooding issue in most instances. I take it the breezeway or whatever this was had a lower roof than the garage to begin with. So it really wasn't connecting to the garage in the way of the real rain loss. If you could redirect that, I think that would be one thing. The other thing is I would like to see some windows in that side facing the neighbor. I have that kind of situation, I know at my house. It means you don't have a crappy cement wall for all practical purposes up against your neighbor. The other thing is, is inside your garage, it becomes beneficial because you can see things at least in the daytime if we have sun or light, which I'm not sure will come back or not. But, you know, I, the two things I would like to see, especially when there's hardy light, is some window space on the side. In the back, I mean, it's, no one's there and it's nice if you have it from a usage point of view inside your garage. And if you do the windows high enough, then people can't really tell what the hell is in your garage. But I'd like to see windows on the side and I would like to see a French drain in the front with the, with the water bleeding out in that direction and really no downspouts going towards the neighbor.
Just one comment on what Commissioner Janks has discussed. A lot of times, they don't use necessarily the pit, but the lots typically have a crest. They typically do something like this. And as long as the pop-up comes on the downside of the crest towards the street... of the crest towards the street, what'll happen is the water will flow over land and will get a sedation rate that way, and it saves them having to dig up the front yard for that. Typically, the pits, like you've discussed, are fabulous for backyards and drainage where there's a rear yard addition and that, they become space conscious because typically between the driveway side and the neighbor's property, that's your five foot side, so there's not a lot of room to put something there without damaging the neighbor's property, but there is plenty of room to put a drain tile with a sock on it and connect it to a pop-up so that the downspouts go directly into this drain tile and pop up, up ahead, so it would be, instead of being towards Mr. Frazier's house, it would be down from Mr. Frazier's house and the flow would not be this way, it would be this way, and that should help substantially eliminate Mr. Frazier's issue and is fairly cost effective and easy for the owner to take into consideration.
The only thing is, is that we need to do water retention on property, it would be helpful long-term, and at least a block from where I live, I saw about five years ago a real nice conflict resolution by that being actually built into the front yard right along that five foot area. No one realizes it's happy, both neighbors, I mean, nobody realizes it's there, but most, but both neighbors are happy about it, they just don't get the flooding.
Okay, thanks, Jeff. I just had a couple of finished questions. You're, you're obviously tearing the whole roof of the garage off, replacing it?
To tidy it in a property.
Okay, and then are you, will you be replacing the house roof as well?
No.
And then the siding on the front of the house, the dormer, the two, the two dormers, are you matching that to the hardy you're putting up or is that staying vital?
Vital, stay vital.
All right, yes, actually, can we open public participation again?
It's up to you.
Okay, open it quick.
But since I was mentioned a couple of times, at this point, I, since he does have some plans to redirect, I don't really care whether it's French drain or what it is, if he gets some of that redirected, I, I'm not gonna have the problems I've had in the past. As to the penetration facing me, I've never, I've come to a lot of these meetings and I really don't understand all the penetration issues. I personally, my other neighbor has, has a solid wall that went up years ago that you can't see through, an addition he put on. I like privacy and I'm not sure, at this point, penetration doesn't bother me, I mean, I know it's been a big issue in front of the planning commission and perhaps it, it looks good for the whole Huntington Woods to have that penetration as people are driving through to see that we don't have, you know, solid walls, but that's not an issue for me.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
All right, does anyone want to make a motion?
Well, somebody better.
Well, I, my, if, if I make a motion, it's gonna be to either, either table it or deny it based upon what I think is the anodycacy in your points, but I don't know what the consensus of the commission is.
I, I don't know, personally, I would move to approve the plans with the caveat that we add a window to that one wall for penetration.
My only concern with that is that's, we're sort of designing on the fly, so we could table it and ask him to come back with that, but to-
Even if we decided on certain dimensions for the window, that would be acceptable?
Yeah, I mean, I think we try to get away from that just for clarity's sake, you know, if we say we want, you know, a window and it's gotta be at least this big, theoretically then we could stuff it in the corner and did it, you know?
Typically, if they're gonna do that, if, if that was where the planning commission was headed, you would decide whether you wanted like one or two windows equidistant from the place or whether you were satisfied with transom. If you were going to do that, then in order to have him come back with what you're looking for, you would need to tell, give him some direction as to what it is. But-
I, I'm a little bit shook.
Did you have a motion or?
Sorry.
I mean, I, I just am speaking from, we did my own house, we had that, the same issue, and on the garage, we ended up having to add two windows, and I know we got approved with that caveat at our initial meeting, it made things a lot easier moving forward not to come back, but if that's not something you want to do.
Yes.
The only question I have is, is that normally the idea of doing that when it's side-facing instead of front and back is to alleviate a bare wall that the neighbor has to face, and in this instance, the neighbor has said that's not an issue.
I think it's also the, though, just driving through the neighborhood, I mean, it's accessible to everybody who's driving down the street.
And I think the other answer to that is, is that person might not, next door, might not always own that house, so it's, it's not just for their benefit, but for a future owner of the house next door. Sheldon, can I ask your main concerns with the way the plans are, just if you would just outline those for us so we all understand exactly what you have concerned about?
Yeah, I don't, at least, it, it appears to me that materials are not called out in, in a way that makes sense. We just found out based upon a question that was asked, there's gonna be hardy on one part, there's gonna be vinyl siding on another part, and I, I just don't want problems later about what was approved. I realize we worked mostly on exterior appearance, but materials are, are a significant factor that's involved here, and I just, I, I just don't think that, I mean, I'll defer to Hank if he thinks these are something firm enough, but, and I don't need to put the decision on you.
No, no, no.
It's a commission decision.
I understand.
I have a concern with, with, well, two different potential shingle patterns, just, you know, quite with the vinyl, I, I'm kind of in Sheldon's camp at this point.
There's, there's a couple of things that you can do with these, clearly, these were made on kind of like a home CAD program type of thing, if you will, they weren't drawn by an architect or a designer to say, so, part of the issue is, is, yeah, there's a story that's somewhat untold with these, so if you're uncomfortable with it, what would be, what I would ask is, is that you do use your prerogative to table rather than deny it so that at a bare minimum, it saves the applicant another feet for renoticing, so at a bare minimum, that would be a courtesy that you could extend to the homeowner. I think that if you basically decide that that's the route that you want to go, that we should have him come back with the siding, with the dimensions, with the, I mean, not the physical siding, but label what he's gonna do because in the discussion this evening, the scope of work appears to have changed from what's on the drawing.
Well, the, the other thing that, that I have a little bit of, you know, I agree with Sheldon to a certain point, when you, when I look at the notes down at the bottom, it talks about a gray aluminum fascia to match existing structure, gray ventilated vinyl sofed, but yet then you're saying it's hardy board siding, there's a lot of different materials you're kind of mixing in here that are in the notes down at the bottom, so it's not entirely clear what you're using where, and I think that that's something that is one of Sheldon's concerns, and, and I guess probably mine as well. It's, it just seems like a, a series of different types of materials being used, and it's not called out exactly where those particular materials are going to be. What's gonna be vinyl, what's going to be, the aluminum in there kind of threw me, because you've got vinyl on the other things and you're talking about aluminum and you're talking about hardy board, a little lack of continuity at that. I would suggest that we table it until it's a little bit more clear.
How closely do you anticipate you'll be able to match those shingles?
Uh, spot on.
How old is the existing roof?
Uh, it's probably, well, I mean, you have the lot of variances, but it's just the standards, one's corning.
Sorry, how, how old is the existing roof?
Uh, it's about nineteen years.
So, probably won't be spot on.
Well, right.
If you can find pre-aged shingles. Be a great business. Okay, anybody?
I guess I would add to it in, in the vein of things not being completely clear, there's a lot of dimensions on here in different places, but since they're not the traditional architectural plans, it's difficult to tell, and there are some missing, like some of the transom windows, you have the size of the window, but you don't have how high off the ground that is or how far, on your, one schematic, I can tell how far it is from the outside edge of the wall, but on, on the other, I don't know how high up it is, and so, how do I approve where you're putting that window if I don't know where you're putting that?
Hank, to your point, you can't build with this anyway, so-
No.
That's correct, these plans would not pass the buildings.
We're not slowing anything down from that standpoint.
Do those plans require architecture?
No. Anybody can draw a residential plan, but you're held to the same standards, so it, it's just, if you do hire an architect with it, typically, they know exactly what goes into it, and there's some, some people that are, and there are some architects right here in the city that regularly appear before the planning commission and the zoning board of appeals that could certainly probably help them out.
Do you have a builder lined up for this already?
No, I was gonna do it myself.
Oh, you're gonna build it yourself? Okay. And let me ask you this, are you comfortable building it off of, off of this? Do you feel that, that it would be, come out exactly the way it was intended to be with all the structure behind it and everything?
Yes, I do.
Okay, but, but you can't get a building permit with this?
Right, so we need it.
So, you're gonna have to have these plans redrawn to allow you to get a building permit, or you're going to have to redraw them with all the, did you meet with Hank before you turned these in or?
He did, this is like the third generation of these plans.
And, and you informed him that he couldn't get a building permit with them designed the way they are?
We had discussions about the plans being drawn and how they were drawn, not traditionally.
So, I, I would move to table this until plans are constructed such that they would allow you to get a building permit and then revisit the plans, and I would say table it rather than having to have you pay another fee to come back.
Table it to the February, the regular February meeting?
That's fine, if that gives him enough time.
Second.
I, I move to table this to the February meeting to allow for plans to be drawn that would allow him to get a building permit.
I don't know that we can say that because a lot of plans that come before us cannot get a building permit, they're not complete to the point of getting building permit and-
They're not necessarily full construction drawings-
Correct.
-but they're dimensioned and, which, which you may want to rephrase to Rick's point, and which you may want to rephrase and say to the point where all of the work and the scope of work is easily identifiable.
He knows what we want him to do, we could just table it and he'll come back with plans that are consistent with what we've discussed.
But I think it has to be a motion. So, take two, what he says. Move to table until plans are drawn such that are appropriate in, what's the right word, for-
Call, call, scope of work.
Scope of work and materials and call out, and call outs.
Do you have a second?
Second.
On favor? Opposed? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, next up, we have matter of site plan review for proposed addition to the Samuelson residence at 10128 Harts.
How you doing? I'm doing quite well. Derek Samuelson, moved to the neighborhood just a few years ago, kind of knew we were moving into a smaller house, knew that we'd need something bigger in the not-too-distant future, but we kind of fell in love with our neighbors and our street and our location, so we decided that an addition was what we needed to do. Instead, our primary concern with these plans was to, so it's a bungalow, right now it just has a master bedroom upstairs with a bathroom, we really wanted to move our kids' bedrooms upstairs, so that was a, the impetus for redesign was to get three bedrooms upstairs, and that's what we have done here.
Anything else to add before we get it rid of Hank?
Sure. Hi there, Andrew Danaher, I'm the architect who helped the Samuelsons get to this point where we are. Currently, it's a relatively straightforward addition, there's an existing three-season room in the back of the house that sits slab-on-grade, does have foundations, and our hope is to reuse the same footprint of first floor coverage, create a small addition to the, I guess it's the north, northwest side of that rear portion of the house, which allows them to extend some living space and make the second floor work out even better, so then we have a second floor that overhangs and creates a covered space in the rear of the yard that they'll use for an extension of their, of their living space, so. Footprint-wise, first floor is the same as it is today, second floor, we grow and we're able to, to create the two additional bedrooms they need for their growing, tried to keep the materials pretty natural, window sizes similar throughout, the rear of the house will have some additional detailing, and the way we called out the siding in the rear is, I hope is a natural seater type of siding in the back, so. We're not touching the front at this point in time, although we did entertain some ideas of increasing the front as well, but we've, for cost reasons, we've focused mostly on the back of the house at this point.
All right, thank you. Hank, anything to add?
Yes, please. Basically, this is really kind of a nice addition in the back, they've gone ahead and they've put in fenestration where they could fit it, they didn't put anything over the overhang portion of it, but they did fit a window in close to where the pine line is from the old to the new, and fit a window in for that, so that everybody could see it, the back of the addition's got a tremendous amount of fenestration, which is real nice to see, and the windows are somewhat replicated on the other side as well. The addition is, you know, brick on the first floor and material is going to be a seated-shaped siding on the second floor, which is an upgrade from a lot of the materials that we usually see, so that was a very nice feature with that. I, I did come up with a slightly different figure for lot coverage based on what the survey had, and I showed it on seven point four square feet over, so anything that you do tonight should be subject to either a zoning board of appeals variance or a determination that it doesn't need, that there's a mathematical error at some point in order to do that, because they, I come up with a fifteen hundred and six point two square feet. So, basically, what I would like to do is, if it's the pleasure of you to approve this house, which is well under the maximum house size, still gives them the needed room, upon resolution of the variance, that they'd be allowed to proceed.
Hank, wouldn't that be saying that the existing house is over coverage? Because they're not increasing footprint, are they?
They're increasing the coverage by adding that back coverage over the back porch.
So, do you see a discrepancy?
It's lot coverage. Well, we can-
Is, is there a discrepancy in the survey or is it architectural?
It's in the survey is what I've found, so what we can do is, we can look that over, so, I mean, any motion to approve would be subject to that. It's a very small amount, one way or another.
Seven feet?
Yes, a square feet.
Yeah, no idea.
I mean, basically, you're not even the size of this table.
Yeah.
You don't want to go to ZB for that.
I, I, I'm very confident that we could figure it out.
Okay. All right, we'll open up for public participation? And public participation is closed. Kim?
I don't have any concerns with the design, I think it's nicely done and I intend modest to accomplish what you're trying to accomplish, I'm fine with it.
Thanks.
I'm just so pleased to see that, all the windows in the back, it looks great. I like the materials you're using, I think it looks great.
I agree, it looks good, well thought out.
It's, it's fine, I, personal, personal thing is, is that every time I see a bungalow where they've extended the roofline, I always, up from the original and making it taller in the back, I always cringe a little bit, because half of them that I've seen- cringe a little bit, because half of them that I've seen, it never actually meets up and then you just kinda go, wow, how'd that happen? Hopefully, this one will. You've done a nice job. You're not trying to make it too huge. You're just trying to get the space you need. I don't, I don't have any problem with it. It's just a separate personal thing when I see that roof continue. It never works. It's unpopular. I don't know. The builders always get to it and have the wrong size. It looks good. You've done a nice job. Kathy, moving on.
On the elevations, the demo elevations, you're showing a note pointing to the brick, or really the, the edge of the roof there that says key and tooth brick. Can you tell me what's going on there and how that comes into the new plan here? How the brick meets, meets the cedar shake at that elevation or that plane?
So, if you go into plan, there's a retooling there in the corner, and that's how we typically keep the brick to make it look right instead of saw cut with a joint. They key and tooth every other brick. So, when the new brick comes in, it fingers itself back into the house. That way, when they tool the joints out, it'll be a consistent face as opposed to a cut joint there. This is traditional detailing that goes back to, gosh, as soon as people did brick houses. So, I don't, unless I'm missing something, I don't, I'm not sure what the question is. It's a better detail than saw cutting a house and turning the corner with it. We can match this brick pretty darn close. We have brick companies out to the site. So, we'll brick all on the first floor, so our intent is to continue the same look all Key and tool and tooth should be a common word you should see on every line in the city when you have two walls that align together. It should never just be...
That's not the issue. The issue is just where that note is pointing to.
Okay. On which one? So, on the west side of the house, the two new walls align perpendicular to each other, so that's where that happens. But we should, we're also planning to do the same thing on the other where it does have about a one foot four inset into a corner, and then we return back into our straight. We don't want that to be a saw cutting joint where we're gonna end up with water problems in the, would be the northeast corner of the house. I guess if there was a, a sematic drawing, I guess I could've shown every tooth line going up the house.
No, no, that's not, that's not the problem. That's not the problem. All right, that's my only comment.
My question is more a matter of practice. This is building over an open porch, right?
That's correct.
Okay. That isn't usual.
It has become more so lately.
Okay. Do we have any master plan or other issues? Coordinates issues?
It's not cantilever.
It's not cantilever because it's supported.
Right. And we're taking the entire porch down, but we're using the foundations only. It's aluminum-sided two-by-four construction today. We're building brick on two-by-six construction around the backside of the house. So, this is gonna be all rebuilt and tied back into this roof.
I do have a photo of the rear portion of the house if you'd like to see it. If it kinda, I can put it up on the board.
Again, if you would.
Okay. I'm gonna do this in the garden so you can see. I thought of it.
There it is.
Yeah, it's on the A 1.1 sheet, top left corner.
If you can see in the top corner there, that's what's there currently. So, that's what's coming down in favor of this. So, you can kinda see what he's talking about with respect to the rear structure of the building. So, to the other question was, is it, once that comes over and they add additional roof to it, that's where the allocation of additional lot coverage comes in?
Okay.
Good?
Yeah. Okay. Jeff?
I appreciate the materials and the pride to bring back in the bottom of the crap in the house.
All right, thanks, Phil. All right. So, does anyone have a motion? No, I'm good. Sorry. Forgot about that. Looks great.
Motion to approve.
So, real quick before we, do we, how do we have to, how do we have to do away with a seven square feet with the motion?
Basically, how you would incorporate it into the motion is subject to a variance of 7.4 feet if it's established it actually needs it. We're gonna find one of three things with this. Either the calculations on the survey are wrong, either the calculations on the plan are wrong, or my calculations are wrong. Whatever the way that it would go, we would still be able to resolve that. And if, in fact, it was over and they did wanna keep it exactly as is, they always have the right to go to the zoning board of appeals. You're couching the motion by putting that in, it just simply sets the framework.
Okay.
Hey, that's my line. Mine was much more complicated.
Now that we're filming these. Motion to approve subject to resolution of the need for a variance or would be approval?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Hank, I'm gonna abstain in case I vote at the ZB.
That's fine.
All opposed? Okay. Congrats. Good luck. Hopefully, somebody's math is wrong.
May your rooflines meet up nicely.
Hope so. Thank you.
Matter of site plan review for proposed addition at the McKeo residence at 25515 Wareham.
Hi, I'm Chris Cuttione. I'm representing Mrs. McKeo. I have drawings up there. We're proposing a small addition off the back and an interior renovation. The addition is 415 square feet with a four-foot brick wall with a limestone sill, party board, and new five windows to match the existing.
Anything else before you take?
If you care, because what she might wanna do is, because she and I went over these photographs, I put them up on the board for you. What maybe it takes this one time is to let me go through the presentation, and then obviously, they can, they can certainly comment after if there's anything they feel that they need to.
Do you want to give it, Hank?
Oh, thank you. You're saving my lines. Okay, so I'm gonna go through here and I'm gonna show you a little bit about what's going on. I'm also gonna tell Chris to feel free to interject if there's anything that she would like to do so with. Basically, you're putting in a small addition on the back portion of this. So, it's not like this is a huge project in any scope. They meet their lot coverage, they meet the house size, they meet the front yard and side yard setbacks, there's no change to that. The height is lower than the original house. Lot dimensions, it's one of the bigger lots on either side of it. It should be noted that today also, I did receive comment verbally from one of the neighbors at 25435 Wareham who had absolutely no problem with it whatsoever. So, and in full disclosure, that, that comment came from my aunt. So, whoever's who live a couple houses down from now. So, basically, what we have here is, we have the front of the house as you can see here. We also then go here to the back portion of the house, and you see what's existing here, and you see the other offset shot that was provided to us here, so you get a good feel for the back of the house. Here's what's going to happen for the back of the house here, is that you get a homogeneous first-floor centered doors that actually balance out. You're getting three windows on this side, two on this side. This whole area over here is changing up so that it looks like a whole consistent back with a lot more fenestration than it ever had before. This area here is the side view of this. You do see the window on the east side of it, so that's the one thing that they've done on this side. And again, I didn't get it so that you could read all the stuff, but on the other side here, which is probably going to be their non-TV wall or some other usage of it, they put another tremendous amount of fenestration in here. You're looking at a brick on the first part of it here and some hardy to break up the siding, so it's not a complete mass of brick in the back portion of it. And again, same thing on the other side here, and you'll notice the wings coat of brick right through here. So, that's kinda where we're at with this. And then we can go from there. That's, that's just basically what you're looking at for this. It's a fairly simple addition, but it's done with diversity of materials and it's done with an awful lot of fenestration, which tends to work well for us in here.
Can you connect to the rear shots?
Sure.
Photos, please.
So, the area that you're looking at, and again, correct me if I'm wrong here, is that you're hipping this back up to here?
Yes.
And this right here is what you're looking at for the new portion of it. You're gonna have a brick wings coat with a sill on here, then you're gonna pick up the siding, which would go up and in between the windows on this side back here. And again, the pitch on this is a low pitch, which ends well below the windows on the second floor, so there shouldn't be any problem with snow or ice back up for any of that.
There's outside roof melt system.
Can you go back to the photos?
Yeah.
Sure.
Thank you.
Is that the one you wanted?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, they're stretching across the whole back?
No, it's a 15 by 26. It's 26 feet. So, the, to the left where it's existing, there's a little cantilever with the siding that's gonna be incorporated with a entry, a back door entry and a stoop with a roof over, overhead.
Let me go back to here.
Yes.
This is the roof over here. So, basically, what happens is where this ends, this is gonna pick up that side over here, and that's gonna become a rear door for this over here with the roof over. So, they pick up some overhead coverage in order, so like if you're coming in from the garage and it's raining, you've got your sill, you're fumbling for your keys, you have something over your head to go in.
So, when you're looking at this section right here, that right there, when I look on the plans, it looks like the brick only comes so far and then there's a section, and I'm just wondering if it's just how I'm seeing it on the plans, there's a section of siding from top, you know, from roof to floor.
It's, it's existing.
It's, that's what I wanted to know.
Yeah, that is existing.
So, so you're, so you're wrapping the brick around and running into that existing wall? And I'm looking, I'm looking at the north side elevation.
You're looking at the north?
Yeah, you're looking at right here, Jill, and that's what it's gonna die into, and this is gonna become their door.
Yes, because right now, that cantilevered out. Right. So, this, there is actually a little, this wall comes out, this wall is proud of that.
No, the siding is proud of the brick.
The siding is proud of the brick.
So, the siding is on a cantilever out about two feet. So, it's happening, that's coming off and we're gonna build that with a foundation.
Okay.
So, they're not gonna lose the floor space, but it's gonna be a foundation. And so, the new room comes over to meet that, the brick dies into it.
Comes out, and so the new room comes out from here.
And the door's gonna be where that window is.
And the door is gonna be there?
Yes.
Okay. So, what I'm seeing when I look at this elevation, if you wanna just walk up here?
I'd like to look at it. Please. If you share.
That's, that's the section of it that's already coming out. Because I'm seeing, I'm seeing your brick, new porch concrete, it says, and then there's brick.
Okay.
And you've got the hardy on the top and the window, and then there's a section between the main house and the addition that looks, that looks like it's ground to seat, to roof hardy, and I'm just wondering what plane that's in.
So, if you look right here, here.
This is, this is what I'm talking about right here.
Chris, do you wanna use us in point?
I don't know if I can work that when you say.
This is, this is just for my own understanding, so.
The button?
But you see which section I'm talking about right here?
There is no green button, Hank.
Yes, sir. I promise you, there's a green button.
Black with a green line. Okay, so this and this is the same plane.
Right.
This is out.
That's coming out, right?
So, this is gonna be, this wall here comes through here.
Okay.
So, that'll be, it'll be, you won't know that this is out, and this will be a new foundation, so it won't be cantilever anymore and be a rat trap. And then this is not going to move. This roof is coming off, and this will all, this will extend out and tie into this roof.
Right.
Does that answer your question?
I think so. I mean, this, this is the section that I'm talking about right there, and I just wanted to, where it looks like it's siding, and I'm just wondering if it's just my view of it from this direction, because here's your, you're on the north elevation, north side elevation.
You're on the other, you're over...
I'm trying to figure out where I am.
You're up here.
That's what I'm trying to figure out, what I'm looking at.
That's what you're looking at.
So, that's existing, I think.
That's what I wanted, that's what I was trying to figure out.
So, that's getting blown away. This whole wall is moving over here.
Right. No, I know that.
So, that this is going to be what you're looking at.
No, but I was just wondering what this siding is from here to here.
That's this right here?
That's that side. It's just, that's what I'm saying, is it just my view of it that I'm trying to, to understand what I'm seeing here?
Yes, because that...
That's the existing, this wall over here.
Yes.
That's what I was trying to understand. Thank you.
Sorry, I wasn't following you.
Nope, that's why I asked you to go and look at this.
Sorry.
Do I have your light, too? Yeah, unless there's anybody that wants to look at anything else from the planning commission. Light it is. Thank you.
Public participation is closed. We're gonna start with Jill because she's gotta go.
I'm sorry, I have to leave early and there's enough here to vote, but I, I think this looks great. I don't really have any concerns over the plans. Yeah, I don't have any concerns.
Kim?
It's possible I'm missing it as I'm looking here, but I think I have the same concern as we've had with some of the other plans tonight, in that I don't see sizes of windows anywhere. I was looking on the interior to see if I could identify those. Do I have that?
Yes.
I did not. I was looking at it, but I wasn't able to identify the sizes. Yes. So, I'm seeing... So, it's a double hunk, 642. Okay. 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 So, we can do the same as we did with the earlier one and refer to the back rather than your presentation. Otherwise, I think it's a, it's a nice, a nice plan, a nice addition. Appreciate the use of the brick and tying the existing siding in with the...
I think it looks good, Hank. No concerns?
Yeah, I've said it. You answered my question.
No comments.
It was politely, just to shut up.
Hank, your comments on this said that there was some dimension, materials, and that.
Pardon?
Your comments on this particular plan indicated that there was some missing...
Window sizes.
Window sizes and materials?
Actually, that was, that was from the one before this and it didn't get deleted.
The plan lacks some details.
Right, that was from before, the one before that. If you take a look, it was the same one, one of the previous ones.
Okay. All right, got it. I'm good. Like it.
Jeff? I have no problems. I know it's great.
Thank you.
Your motion?
Move to approve.
Prove this presented.
Second?
Okay, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Congrats.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want your plans?
She does her thing.
I drew all over that one. You might want somebody else's.
I didn't draw on mine.
Take two.
I drew all over that one, you might want somebody else's.
I didn't draw on mine.
Take, take two.
They're just going to get recycled.
First cleaner.
Uh, let's see here, we are.
Number nine.
Solar panel. Matter of review, planning commission approval for a proposed front roof solar panel installation for the Ahuvia? Did I butcher that?
Thank you. Oh, you got it exactly right.
Two six three eight eight Dundee.
Thank you very much. Good evening, and I appreciate you all for staying and being out on a weekday night, and it gets late after a while, and I'm just really appreciative of that. Yeah, so I'm here tonight on behalf of myself and my husband, who's at University of, he's teaching tonight, so he couldn't be here, but he was here, he was here last week or a couple of weeks ago when we went in front of the environmental planning, what is it called?
Advisory board.
Thank you, Mary. Right, the advisory board, who also sort of helped us and worked with us a little bit on, on this. And I'd also like to introduce Brandon, Brandon Bauer, he is the installation manager for Yellow, gosh, what is it, Yellow?
Yellow what?
Yellow Light, who's the company that we decided to contract with after meeting with several of them about our desire to put solar on our roof. And just to introduce myself, my name is Aura Ahuvia, I'm the rabbi at Congregation Sher Tikva in Troy, and my husband and I moved here about three years ago, I want to say, and did a good bit of our, of work to our house at this time. And tonight we come before you because we want to put solar up on our roof, which includes the front portion of the roof. So if you wouldn't mind indulging me, I prepared my remarks, so I wouldn't leave anything out, I hope that's right. It's, it might be surprising, but solar energy is actually viable in the state of Michigan because solar rays that generate electricity are not blocked by clouds. So we are perfectly able to make use of that technology. My husband and I have thought a lot about that, we, a lot about the fact that going solar is not only important, but while it's still kind of in the expensive phase, it's really important for early adopters who can afford to do so to, to go for it, and we see ourselves in that mold. I know that you get frequent requests from homeowners about sort of ordinary things, adding additions and such and like, like we saw tonight. And I wanted to say that we don't actually see our request as an ordinary request. We actually put it into a different category as a response to an emergency. It's not an emergency that Huntington Woods is facing, it's not an emergency that Michigan alone or the, or the country is facing, but we see it as part of a response to the global emergency of, of climate change. There's a lot of research out there that talks about how it's absolutely critical that we do something, for instance, experts say that we have about 10 years to reduce globally by half our carbon dioxide emissions, and then we have until the year 2015 to reduce the rest. And it makes a huge difference whether we miss this by a little or a lot, and my husband and I are simply looking for an opportunity to do our tiny little part. Interestingly, some research shows that two of the most effective things that we can do as individuals or as cities are switch to electric cars and convert our homes to solar power, to the most effective things. And interestingly, going along with this, there is a man who was commissioned by the U.S. Department of Energy to track U.S. energy production and usage a number of years ago. He was a MacArthur Grant Award recipient, award winner, and according to his research, he found that local city regulations that restrict solar power installations are one of the most serious obstacles in the U.S. in terms of reducing greenhouse gas emissions. Erin and I, however, are confident that here in Huntington Woods, that, that, and we hope sincerely that we value action over those kinds of obstacles, because we feel like the time is now and there's no time to waste. We here in, in the woods enjoy a relatively affluent population who care a lot about global warming and take pride in their homes, and we were imagining of how, how exciting it might be for Huntington Woods to become a poster child in this region or even in the state of Michigan for ultimately achieving the highest percentage of solar-powered homes in the Midwest. We think it is not an impossible dream. Some of my remarks tonight are going to be addressing some of the things that we're experiencing as roadblocks, and we're looking for your help and for your support in overcoming them. One has to do with the fact that solar power is expensive, and while we're willing to pay and we're blessed to be able to afford it, there are a few things that run the risk of making it even more expensive. For us personally, what we're looking at to have a fully functioning system, which includes a large battery designed to store the electricity so that what we collect in the day is available to us at night and, and also in the many power outages that our fine city gets to experience every single year, we're looking at a, a cost pre-tax of $37,000. Fortunately, after the federal tax rebate available in the year 2020, this is going to come down to $27,380. We are aware that solar power costs are continuing to fall rapidly so long as enough people continue to be willing to serve as early buyers, and we want to be some among those early buyers. One of the things that we're afraid of are the city, are city regulations that might either add to the cost of installing the system that we're looking at, or the city regulations perhaps might decrease the efficiency of those systems, not only on our house, but in other houses that want to look at going solar. The specifics of our request are these. In order to fully convert to solar power, we need to install solar panels on three of the four sides of our roof, including the street side, because our street side roof is the one that faces west by southwest. This is the most, the most important side in terms of collecting solar power, and I've got some photographs to distribute to you. These are just my husband's best attempt at cutting and pasting what panels look like elsewhere onto our current house. They're not precisely accurate, you're going to see that they're a little more red than they actually would be in this picture. In real life, they would be closer to black and closer to a match of our roof. Also, the picture that's circulating has silver-to-white-looking frames outside each solar panel. That, too, is inaccurate because nowadays they're black, so they blend in with everything and they don't look as pronounced as what you're looking at, but we wanted to give you some general idea of what it might look like. Current city regulations read, quote, "Solar panels shall be located on a rear or side-facing roof unless such installation is proven to be ineffective or impractical as determined by the planning commission." So we're here tonight to inform you that moving the panels from where we'd like them to be, which is the, the quarter of the roof that faces west by southwest, moving those panels to the north-facing roof, which is the only side of the roof that we wouldn't have panels on otherwise, would be both ineffective and impractical. It would be impractical because we estimate that it would cut the productivity of those panels by around 25%. We also believe it would make our project ineffective for a couple of reasons. One has to do with its lack of efficiency power-wise, but the second has to do with perceptions and other people who drive through the woods and notice what is going on with their neighbors in terms of going solar. Studies have found that when people see solar panels on their neighbor's home, it strongly motivates them to also consider going solar. Part of why we'd like to do this is in, is we do so in the hope of inspiring others in Huntington Woods and in nearby towns to jump on this bandwagon. Putting solar panels on the front of our roofs is perhaps, perhaps the boldest statement of our values that we could possibly make, and it has the additional advantage of being an effective way of encouraging others to go solar, too. In preparation for tonight's meeting, Erin and I were so appreciative to be able to meet with city manager Amy Sullivan and with the environmental advisory board. It's wonderful to see Jeff Jenks here tonight, who was there that night, as well as Mary, who's here tonight to, to listen to some of your responses. We also are so grateful to, to the many of our neighbors and people that, when we posted that on Nextdoor, that app that you post, we posted to the neighborhood that we were going to be here tonight arguing in favor of solar, and in the first 24 hours, we got something over 30 responses, all positive, and we got zero complaints. We also had neighbors who, one of whom said they would be here tonight, and then some other thing that they, they weren't, be able to be here tonight, but we do have the support of neighbors and generally of the neighborhood. I wanted to mention one thing that might come up and sort of explain why it probably would not be a great idea for us. Specifically, these are something that we discovered called solar skins. Solar skins are something that have the capacity to sort of serve as a skin that goes on top of the solar panels. It, it blots out their color and it, solar skins can come in any color, so it can sort of make them even more invisible. Our, this is not a great idea from our point of view for a few reasons. Number one, we looked into it and discovered it would cost us an additional $1,400. Number two, it would reduce the efficiency of the solar panels by 15%. And number three, it would also make having solar panels on the front roof more invisible, which, again, we feel runs counter to the idea of being, serving as evidence that more people in the neighborhood are going solar, which, which we hope to be able to do. The last thing I wanted to mention as an aside, and we've said this to the environmental advisory board as well, that we're willing to open up our home as a demonstration home in the coming year and years, once, twice a year, to open it up to anybody in the woods who might like to seriously consider going solar, but first would want to come in and see what it looks like and find out what, what our bills have gone from and to. They'll come into the basement and see how large and how noisy or silent the battery is that we're investing in, as well as, we did all kinds of other sort of things to our home in the rebuild that we've been working on over the last couple of years, including triple-pane insulated windows, which reduce heat loss in winter and keep the air conditioning in in the summer. We, we installed new super-high-energy-efficient heating and air conditioning units, we installed smart thermostat panels that allow us to minimize energy use, more insulation in the attic, et cetera, et cetera. So we're willing to serve as a model home if that's something that seems appealing and, and might further help people in Huntington Woods, Huntington Woods really explore this as a realistic option for themselves in the future. And we're hoping that tonight you're going to be willing to grant support for us going solar. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything to add?
Yeah, if it's a pleasure, I'll, I'll put it up on the board so that you can see. Basically what you have is you have a house with a.
That's not our house.
I know.
Okay.
I'm going with this one here. If you take a look, you see here where the side of the roofs are longer than the ends of the roofs. This is the front of the house, which shows eight panels on the front of it. This is the side, this is the rear, okay? So what happens here is that this is the area of concern. Basically, what the code reads is that separate, non-integrated flush-mounted solar panels shall be located on a rear or side-facing roof, which do not front any street unless such installation is proven to be ineffective or impractical as determined by the planning commission. Such a system should not project vertically above the peak of the roof, which is does not to which it's attached, or project vertically more than three feet above a flat-roof installation. For this, because typically decisions like this would go to the zoning board of appeals, but this was specifically written in the code to come back to the planning commission, and I believe that'll be changed, or at least we're going to go before the city commission to ask that if we change it, having referred to the zoning board of appeals. Again, the burden of proof would be on to show that the, that without the front-facing portions, the system would be ineffective, not producing any significant or desired effect. You'll have to decide at what point ineffective comes in, this is not defined by code, there's not a certain percentage of this, you can't do it if it's this, you can do it if it's that. So that's not in the code. So typically, that would be a not, unable to use the maximum, but rather the system functioned in a reasonable capacity without front placement. Again, this ordinance was enacted by previous planning commissions and in the previous zoning ordinance as well as this one, to keep solar panels off the front of the houses. As much as they think that it would be a good idea on it, previous planning commissioners have thought that, and comment that they had taken was, is it's great that there's an opportunity for solar, but they don't want to look at it from the street. So having said that, a lot of what they were saying with the invisibility shields and, and you know, the screening that goes over the top of it, would actually be helpful to their situation as far as using it at least on the front, should the planning commission have the pleasure of decide, decide to go ahead and go forward and let them put the panels on the front. So that's one of the things where it is. Again, they do have the right to solar panels with this distinction. The city of Huntington Woods does not say you cannot put solar energy on it, in fact, we encourage it. It's just that the front-facing roof line was determined by previous bodies to be something that they didn't want to look at. And while I, we, the city, would understand their position, this is the alternative position, and that's how we got to where we are. So basically, this is really one thing that you have to consider is that while I certainly don't disagree that solar panels are a wonderful option for houses and for people, and particularly in the city of Huntington Woods, which is really second to none as far as that, the placement was called into question before. So if you determine that the system can't be used, or if there's a reasonable reduction in that, you do have the authority to allow them to place this on the front of their house. That does come to you, at least for the time being. So that's why they're here. They have a gentleman here from this installation company that might be able to answer any questions, but I do want to show you a couple of the things here, because they did send this to me. These are the previous installs that they've done with the panels. So you can kind of get an idea of what the panels look like on the roof, and that would be them right there. This would be how they look on this, on the view of the house. This would be the installation pieces that come down in through here, and then, correct me if I'm wrong, but the solar panels mount to these?
Yeah, on those rails there. And one thing I'd like to point out here is, on this system, we're actually using conduit, that gray PVC pipe, but here at their residence, we're actually going to be able to penetrate into the attic and hide all the conduit, so you'd only see those black panels, and that's it.
Right, but typically you wouldn't see this anyway, because the panels would be over the top of this.
Yeah, depending on the roof, I mean, sometimes we have to run across ladder, and then you'll see it, but in this situation, we're going to do solar decks on each roof, so it will be internal.
And this would be like one of the aerial views of a house, with this would be what the street side is here, so this would be what you'd be looking at. This would be a closer version of what you're seeing there. And these were furnished to us by Yellow Light, which is the company for the installation for this.
And this is actually the predecessor model of what they're getting, so this is a Sill Pep 320 on, or 310 on this house, and they're getting the Sill Pep 320 with the exact same panel size, color, it's just slightly more efficient.
So they're no real different than this? I mean, this is what they, this is what Yellow Light furnished me with, so that's why I'm putting it up here, so I don't have anything else to go by. So that's kind of what you're looking at there. If you have any questions, to the best of my ability, I'll be happy to answer them. Other than that, I would defer to, to them.
Thanks, Hank. We'll open it up to public participation.
Ray Fraser, 13320 Vernon, I'm all for any effort to solar energy. I just had one question or concern. I don't know how far along the research has gotten, but I've read some things about Tesla offering solar shingles that apparently look a lot better. offering solar shingles that apparently look a lot better than solar panels. I'm wondering whether you've looked into that and what the issues might have been?
Yeah, so we're actually a Tesla certified installer, and they're getting a Tesla power wall, as you mentioned, the battery backup. And Tesla's great at creating hype and marketing and everything, but unfortunately, the solar shingles just aren't even on the radar as far as being available in the coming future. I think they've shifted all their efforts to the cars. Basically, we're just lucky to get power walls, and they're really using the same exact factories, same exact factories to manufacture the cells. They're shifting them either into the cars, into the power walls, and they really have abandoned the solar roof as of right now.
And I've heard they're obnoxiously expensive.
Yeah, yeah.
Anyone else for...
Hi, I'm Mary Maslin Cooper. I live at 13122 Talbot, and I am on the environmental board, but I'm here as a private citizen tonight, not speaking for the board at all. I simply want you folks to start thinking about whether or not we need to be revisiting our decision about the use of solar panels, whether or not our process of thinking about putting them in homes in our city is too antiquated to keep up with what we need to be doing as a community at large. One of the things that Hank didn't mention that has come up in the discussion of solar panels in the past was glare to the south-facing house, or the house that's facing, the south-facing room. And solar panels at one point in time were very glossy. They are no longer like that. They are textured in a way, so that type of solar glare is not there any longer. Primarily, you saw things like that that would happen in commercial installations. You would have a problem with that on roadside solar with cars driving by and they get glare in their face or whatever. But I really think that we need to revisit as a community how we're looking at what we're doing to help offset our carbon footprint. And one of the ways to do that would be to encourage others in the community who can't afford it to actually be the trailblazers for the rest of us. That's all I want to say.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jeff Spakowski. I live at 10155 Lussell Boulevard. I don't know you, but I saw your Nextdoor post, so that's why I'm here tonight. We've been in here for 10 years now. The kids are about to age out of schools, and when the money from college frees up, we've thought about getting a solar roof. And, you know, the attitude that the planning commission in the city takes is going to be part of our decision about whether or not we choose the state of Huntington Woods. So people are watching what you're doing.
Great, public participation is closed. Jeff, good to go.
I sit this year on planning and I also sit on environment. I've been on the commission for 20 years, and I just got re-elected to four more. One of the problems for a number of years in this city has to do with the electrical circuits that we have. We are a small city. DTE couldn't give a damn about us. They don't respond. The northwest circuit has been a disaster for years. The southwest circuit is a problem. Up on the hill, there are two circuits. When you bring it to DTE's attention, they don't really do that much about it. There is a value aside from environmental of trying to get off the system, because I believe DTE looks at the size of your community and says, you can't make enough noise in Huntington Woods, even though we believe we're very powerful. There have been continual reports from the city manager that she cannot get responses from DTE. I, when Nextdoor hits, I hear about it very quickly. So I, when the rabbi puts something up there, I got a Nextdoor Huntington Woods notice. That's a picture they posted up there of what they think it's going to look like.
Yeah, that was Aaron's first try, and then he took it down because it doesn't look quite that, it's not going to look like that.
Then I looked out the front door to the house across the way. It's not quiet blending in, and it's windows and vinyl and everything else. And then Robert Lebo, who was our architect, creative person, sent me the Tesla roof, which he said isn't really available. It's stunning. But the other discussion, at least they had in the environmental committee, was that you had to really take your roof off. If it was a new build, it was fine because it didn't put a lot of cost in it. But otherwise, you had to take your roof off aside from any of this. I would like to see us try it out. Did you get reactions from the person across the street?
I don't know, because we're busy people. Aaron did reach out to them, but we haven't heard back, so I don't know.
But I mean, I would like to try it. I think we need to, and I do sit on board, Voices for Justice, so I have a concern for the environment, but I'd like to try it. I'd like to see how effective it is. There's a big question at the north latitude, do we have enough sunlight? Is it really going to work year-round? You'll have an expense to put it in, even with the deduction. Is there a lifetime payback? The other thing is, is how do you match up all of the material inside your house? I mean, I can talk to all my lights inside the house, and I can control my thermostat from anywhere in the world and have done it for years, but the question becomes, what's your payback? If this is prohibited, at least in front, the question is, does that make the system ineffective? And I think a 25% loss in efficiency in a region where we question whether there will be enough sunlight, this isn't Florida, it isn't the Caribbean. I think I'd like to see it tried. The only question that I would have is, unless the immediate neighbor across the street is going to run completely amok, I would like to see us approve this and then start monitoring what is the payback? What are the techniques that are being used? Do you have to cut out too much? And also, how does DTE work to effectively tie into the system? Because they really don't care about little cities. Maybe they would disagree.
Thanks, Jeff.
Can I just ask for a clarification from a gentleman from Yellow Light? My understanding, or at least what I got, what you said, and I don't want to misquote this or write it down wrong, you said 25% was the reduction of the specific panels that would go from the front to the other side. So it's not 25% of the whole project, it's 25% of the six panels, is that correct?
Of the eight panels.
Eight panels?
Yeah, so those shifting to the north, that's going to turn into about a 10% of annual...
So a 10% overall, so it's not, so it's, actually, if you were going to look at the whole system, you could make the case and say, well, the whole system will be 10% less, or rather than the whole system would be 25%.
On an annual kilowatt-hour basis, the same unit, you know, you pay for DTE. But the important thing here with the battery backup system, that power wall is relying on peak power in the event of an outage, or if she's cycling the battery just to save from buying from DTE. So they drain the battery at night, and then it's relying on that peak power during the day. So by cutting those panels to the north, like if they have a power outage in the winter, you're basically throwing those north panels out. I mean, I'm sure you guys will see, like on your north and south roofs, snow collects on the north and doesn't melt nearly as fast. So in the winter, when you're in a power outage and you're relying on that, you are cutting it by those eight panels completely, like almost out of the system. And that's, when you talk about in a backup situation, that's hours of the day that they might be losing power. You know, it's like having a generator and basically just limiting how much gas you have to supply.
I just wanted to clarify, there just wasn't clear on that.
I would still think at 10%.
Well, I'm not arguing the point, I just wanted to clarify.
No, thank you, that was... Hold on.
While I disagree with none of the points that Jeff has made or the view of me, I don't think this commission is the place for that. Right now, we've got a set of regulations that we have to comply with, okay? And we can't ignore those. Whether they should be changed is a valid question that is properly addressed to the city commission, which will probably address it back to us. But in terms of evaluating the validity of this particular project, we're stuck with the regulatory scheme that we've got in place now. And I would not encourage us to ignore that. I don't think we have the opportunity to ignore that. Meanwhile, I do have some questions. You said that if you move the panels off of the most south-facing side of the roof, you'd suffer roughly a 10% hit in terms of the production over a year.
Of the whole system, yes.
Of the whole system, okay. If, and I'm just trying to get a sense of this thing. I noticed, at least in one of the pictures that we've got here, that there's a fairly large tree on the street side. Does that impact the efficacy?
Yeah, so that's in it as well, in our analysis. So we use a system that uses LiDAR, which is basically mapping out from satellite, and it'll show you the height of the trees and everything, and the adjacent homes. Also, that's taken into account, too. So I have like, actually, copies of these analysis. So with the panels on the front, it's 7,700 kilowatt-hours annually, and then after moving those to the north, it drops to about 690. So that's the 10% difference.
Okay, got it, okay. What's the roof color now?
You have it in front of you. It's a...
Can't really tell if it's dark.
It's fairly visible from the street because it's a pretty flat pitch, but...
I mean, is it black or is it...
Yeah, it's dark gray, man.
Yeah, I think it's, yeah.
Plain old black?
Like charcoal.
Like that.
Okay, I'm just curious, because I'm worried about the appearance, obviously, from the To what extent is this, I'm just trying to figure out, and you've given us the overall annual hit on this thing, if those panels are moved to the other side. What kind of dollar savings are you talking about with the panels in place where you want them, and if you move them to the other, less efficient side?
Yeah, so my estimations are, we're adding about two years of per return on investment. So taking it from about 10 years to 12.
I don't understand that.
The payback.
Oh, okay.
So when they would get their money back.
All right. If, what happens, you mentioned skins, okay? Or I think you mentioned skin.
She did.
Whoever mentioned skins. Okay, those, what function are those? What do they do?
So they actually cover the panel, and that's something we've actually never even installed. It's more of like a prototype that we found, and it's something that's possible, but I've never actually seen it yet, so...
The purpose being?
Like, let's say you had a green shingle or a green metal roof, you can get like a green skin, and it makes the panels match like the color. So here, already being like a gray, black, charcoal roof, I wouldn't see the main benefit to it.
Okay, all right. I mean, given the way this thing has been imposed to us, it comes down to whether that 10% hit is a significant impairment of the efficiency of the project. And that's something, I guess, from the point of view of, given the regulatory structure we have here, I don't think that's a significant impairment that justifies moving the panels off from the less efficient side to the more efficient side. That's my, that's my two cents. That 10% hit strikes me as, and I'm not suggesting you're trying to mislead us or anything like that, but I don't know all of the confounding factors that could vector in on this thing and change things around and move the numbers in particular. So I would, my own view is that 10% hit is de minimis, and in my view, doesn't justify putting the panels on the front of the house, as opposed to dealing with, conforming with the existing regulatory structure we have. That's my two cents.
With your permission, can I, can I respond to that?
You don't need my permission.
Yeah, what, in my view, what, one of the things that 10% tends to gloss over or hide is, as Brandon was talking about, the issue of the wintertime. And we've all lived in the woods long enough to experience our wonderful, you know, snowstorms that throw the power out for sometimes, you know, hours, but sometimes days at a time. Sometimes it's an ice storm and whatever else. And one of the concerns that comes up for me, and one of the reasons we decided we wanted to put in a battery to, say, store up some of this power, is because we have had to throw away all of the contents of our refrigerator and freezer multiple times in the three years that we've lived here. And it isn't only the summertime that those power outages occur, it's also the wintertime. And, you know, as we learned, the snow doesn't melt off of those north-facing solar panels the way it would rather readily if they're allowed to face the west.
But my understanding is that this is a supplemental system, or even maybe even primary system, but you're not disconnecting from the Edison grid. Is that accurate?
Our hope is to be disconnected from the grid, but if we can't get there, then this, we're hoping to maximize the, our independence from it.
Okay, all right. Policy-wise, I have no argument with anything you've said. I'm just thinking that at this point, this body doesn't have, can't give you the relief that you're requesting as a, as a matter of policy in the city, okay? We've got what we've got, and the question's going to be whether or not the efficacy factor justifies over, you know, running by the current regulation that says it can't be visible from the street or whatever, whatever the words are. Okay? That's my two cents.
Great.
The production loss would be 10% annually?
Right.
What would it be in the winter?
In the winter, like the sun is much lower, much lower. So I mean, it can be all the way up to 35% lower, because you're basically cutting out those panels. They're covered, or they're not getting sun, so the south roofs are going to melt, you know, substantially faster, because there is snow. So at that time, you could be cutting out a third of the power that they might have to charge that power wall. So that's my biggest concern.
So 35% loss, including the angle of the sun and snow melt from that system?
Right, because this system could peak at like 7.3, and if you're taking out those eight panels, if they're on the north and they're covered, or they're not getting enough sun, what have you, that's 2.5 kilowatts you're taking out right there. So when you're talking about that charging the power wall, if she's at 0%, the sun's coming out, and now instead of seven kilowatts, right off the bat, you're getting five, you know, it's going to decrease how much she has to keep all of her stuff running.
And what's the anticipated need to power the entire house?
At any given moment?
Or average?
So they're extremely energy efficient, so I think during a winter, like an outage, they might be averaging around 2,000 to 4,000 watts, depending on what they're running, the furnace and the fridge and all that. And this power wall is 13 kilowatt-hours. So they'll have like 2,000 watts for seven hours, if it takes so. Almost a full night, they can run two kilowatts. So they're going to be pretty much draining that battery and need to recharge it as soon as the sun comes up. And in the winter, if that's, if we only have three or four good, you know, sunny hours, that they're going to need everything they can get, because they're going to be using that power as the sun, you know, as we're charging it, too. So one power wall is what we see... With a typical home, you're gonna need at least two, but like I said, they're extremely energy efficient. So, so they're right on that line of, of the one supplying everything they need. That's just why that, putting them on the south is gonna be very helpful in those outage times.
So the system is designed to power the house in fall during the winter and access in the summer?
Exactly, yeah. So they're still tied to the grid. So they'll be, in the summer months, overproducing, selling energy back. Or if they choose, they can drain the battery at night, which we call cycling, and then recharge it during the day, so they limit what they're selling back, because then they get the full value of the kilowatt hour. Because DTE only sells you back at a generation portion. They don't sell it, they don't give you like the distribution transmission, all those things that you're paying for. So, a lot of people do that, actually get the power walls strictly for economical purposes, just to cycle and keep all the energy in the home, instead of selling back and losing a little bit of the value.
Good?
Okay, so your intention is to be a hundred percent self-sufficient? So your, so your intention is not to necessarily be selling it back into grid? The power, the power distribution wall, as you call it, is going to store up all the, the energy that's being created, and then they'll be drawing off of that in the night hours, or in any time where the, the sun isn't producing enough power for the house? Correct? Am I understanding that correctly?
Yeah, definitely. They'll be able to do that in the summer months. In the winter months, though, it's.
Right.
Because of DTA, DTE, they don't let you size a system to reach a hundred percent of what you use annually. Otherwise, we would have, we'd be applying for panels all over the garage roof and the north roof, the whole thing. And we would just be cutting out the south roof if you denied it. So we're right on that line. So in a region here, it's hard to be one hundred percent off the grid in the, in the winter.
So you're not planning on doing anything on the garage?
No.
So just the house? What's the lifespan of the system? Like, what's the reliability level of it? How long, how long should it, you know, you, you say the, the payoff is ten years. What is the expected lifespan of the system that's being installed?
So everything's warranted for twenty-five years. The panels, that's a linear power warranty. So a lot of the grade, like, a little under one percent each year. So like, when you're twenty-five, they should, they should be producing eighty percent of what they're rated.
And, and I assume that technology is going to continue to advance on these particular power cells. Is part of this plan that, that your company provides that, as their system starts to degrade and newer technologies are coming out, will you be upgrading their system at all? Or this is just what they buy, and they are stuck with that level of technology?
Well, some customers certainly.
For the length of the system?
They, some customers do upgrade, but it wouldn't be in your, like, economic interest.
I'm, yeah, I figured, but.
Uh, but you, you certainly can. But to give you an idea of like, how much it's advanced, like, in the past five years, we would be, five years ago, we'd be installing like a, a two hundred and sixty watt panel. Now we're installing a three hundred and twenty. So it is progressing slowly, but, uh, pretty much what's gonna happen is they're gonna hit their warranty, and then people are just gonna replace the system with, you know, higher efficient stuff. But I don't see the technology completely changing.
So the next question is, is if you had the panels on the sides of the roof that you're defining, and you, based on the fact that the current regulation doesn't want to see them on the front, if the skin technology existed such that you would put those on simply, obviously the ones that face the street, do you know what the impact of that would be on the system?
So just reading the company that offers that skin, they estimate it's around ten to fifteen percent a drop in production.
On that side?
On that side.
On where you're putting the.
On wherever you put the skin on.
Yeah, obviously, it's gonna limit how much sun comes through, because it's covering the whole panel.
What's the, um, the battery storage that's gonna be in the basement?
Yeah.
What's the safety level on that type of?
Oh, they're completely listed. I mean, Tesla's been through every amount of testing you can imagine. And, uh, they're really good about offering a, a lot of tests, and they do a fire test, what happens if, in the event that the house catches on fire, uh, everything you can. And they're fully rated to be inside.
And what's the, what is the warranty on that battery storage system? Is, is, is your, is your twenty-year warranty on just the solar cells themselves, or is it on the entire system?
No, so everything has its own warranty. So everything on the roof is twenty-five years. And then the power wall is ten years, or ten thousand cycles. So if she's, like, if, if she was cycling every day, you can imagine that's around three hundred cycles a year. You know, and you have ten thousand or ten years, kind of similar like a car warranty.
And what is your plan to cycle every day, or to?
I think one step at a time. Like, we, we might have an idea now about what we might, what we will intend to do, but it, it might change depending on what we learn after we install.
So you're obviously taking into account, based on whatever plan you put in place, the viability of that wall for X number of cycles.
And once we install the system, she'll have complete record of that on her Tesla app. She'll be able to change it with just a, a switch over from going from ten percent reserve to a hundred percent reserve. It changes how much it cycles each day.
So if, if you are not able to install the panels on that south facing front of the house, would you think about putting panels on the garage to try and compensate for the fact that you didn't have them on the front?
Yeah, that is something we thought about, because we could fit five panels ideally on the garage, on the southwest and east roofs. Uh, the only thing is, it's gonna add trenching costs to get the, the wires over to the house. Or if we connect in a sub-panel in the garage, then that's adding a separate system. So you need a separate inverter. So those costs, it, it doesn't, uh, doesn't make it worth it to do just five panels. Like, we could fit, you know, more amount to justify the thousand bucks in a trench, or the extra inverter, which is around fifteen hundred dollars. Uh, that'd be worth it, so. At this time, we don't plan on doing that.
Right, all right.
Well, I was also wondering about the garage portions. Like, I guess part of the question is, is it your desire to put these on the front of the house so people see it?
Yes, but actually, putting it on the garage was one of the very first things that we thought of doing as the alternative, and, and the more we thought, like, went back and forth with cost, we're not, we're not avoiding the garage because we're trying to hit, like, be a, a poster child for the neighborhood by putting it out in front of the house. We're avoiding the garage because, for all of the, the reasons that, that Brandon just indicated. But in addition, our garage is, is kind of falling down a little bit. And it's just like, i- it's gonna become, like, impossible to afford, basically.
Okay. And then you said these are three hundred and twenty watt panels?
Correct.
And that's, like, that number is how much power it's driving?
Yeah, so that's a, it's called a standard test rating, basically. And that's like, at any given moment, that's what they could peak at, three hundred and twenty watts at one time. So that's where you get the, the total system rating of seven point three six kilowatts.
And are there higher rated panels that you could get?
Yeah, they have like a three sixty. Um, there's one company called Sun Power that has like a four hundred watt panel. Uh, but what we call those are like the Lamborghinis of solar panels, where you're, they're way too expensive for the additional wattage. So these Sylphes are by far the most popular because of that bankier buck, power per square foot.
And then, just from a spacing perspective, on the roof, on the front, like, the picture we have here, this one versus what your husband put together, I, I know he just was trying, but like, what would it actually look like? How have you spaced it out on the roof?
Yeah, so this, uh, software is like an industry-leading software. So the scaling is actually gonna be really close to what you see here. Um, so we just, uh, we use Eagleview program, which gives us like, within six inches, uh, the measurements of the roof. And then when we go into this program, we just confirm those measurements, and then it scales, and then it takes into account the pitch, and we can play around and put the panels where we want. We can actually design the whole system. We don't even get on the roofs anymore prior to measuring and everything. We just use the software. So it's gonna look, um, I can give you these actually, to give you a better idea.
Kind of centered like this picture?
Yeah, the, the layout that you have.
And then, is this the most panels you could fit on the front?
Yeah. Because you can either orientate and portrait like how you see, or landscape like this picture. And so when we do design, we do, we just do both and try to fit as many as we can, obviously.
So. So how many are you actually putting on the front? Or do you wanna put on the front?
Eight.
Eight? This one has nine.
Oh, that layout.
This one has nine as well.
Yeah. Okay, yeah, we, we changed that because we wanted to limit. And we actually, when we did the, the measurements, we couldn't fit nine. So now, with the, one is over here, there's ten on this one.
Okay. I'm just gonna say, I, I agree with Sheldon a lot. I think it's tougher opt, for this panel to decide what's ineffective and impractical. It seems very much the ZBA's realm. That's kind of where my mind is at. It seems we're making decisions on math and what's economical. But that's not usually what we take into account. That's all I have to say.
I really applaud what you're trying to do here, and I think I, um, stuck in that spot too, between wanting to support that and being a first mover, and having that represent our neighborhood, and abiding by the regulations that we have in front of us. And, and trying to resolve those two things. I do have a couple more questions in terms of options, I guess. You talked about the power wall, and did I hear you say there's, there's an opportunity to have an additional one, and with that store additional energy?
So with the power walls, they're just stackable? So with one, you get thirty amp backup. So any load in your home, you can back up as long as the breakers, thirty amps or lower. So we just take out anything higher and put a, a panel upstream of the gateway, which is essentially a transfer switch. And you add on a second one, you just get sixty amps. You add on a thirty, you get ninety amps. And you're just doubling or tripling the capacity.
And it could just hold that capacity. So in some of the instances where we're talking about not being able to generate that, regenerate that energy on a winter day, if you've got an additional power wall, you may be able to maintain that energy and have that as a source. And I understand there's cost involved in all of this, but as David said, the cost is generally not the deciding factor for, for what we look at. And, and others, you could also, I know not the intent at all, and probably not in your realm, but if you're worried about not having energy, or losing power, or refrigerator loss, and lots of folks have generators that accomplish that as well. So there are alternatives to what we're talking about doing here.
There aren't any laws against loud sounds, are there? In hunting duels?
Yes.
There are.
Oh, yeah?
There are.
Because those generators are hellaciously loud.
So, yeah. W- when I look at, and it is vague, what ineffective or impractical may be, ten percent overall does not, to me, seem ineffective or impractical. It's not ideal, but it's not ineffective or impractical. There are other options that can make it more practical at a cost, and all of this is at a cost. Looking at the comments that we had at the public input, the last time the code was visited, was the.
Which was when?
I don't know.
Two thousand eighteen.
So not that long ago, right? Two thousand eighteen. You know, that, that, the public input was that they didn't wanna look at it. And so, I kinda have to abide by that public input. I know you've gotten some other public input today, but that didn't change our ordinances. Unfortunately, so. I'd like to see it move forward in some way, but I don't know that I would be comfortable in our role.
I also wanted to say just one thing about the generator, because that's the first thing, Erin, and I thought of the, you know, with the first major power outage, when we moved into his mom's for a few days, uh, because it was so many days long. We did consider buying a generator, and that certainly exists as an option for consumers, but we are really concerned about the environment. And generators use gasoline, and we really, really wanna be part of the solution to global warming and not contribute to more of the problem. I'm not interested in buying a generator. I'm not interested in, in continuing to keep up demand for gas-based generators. It's just.
And, and I don't wanna encourage you to do that, but I don't know how to get around it with what we have inside of us.
Right, okay.
I just had a quick follow-up question.
Yeah.
If this were approved today, when can you start doing the work? Or is this a project that you can't start till late spring somehow?
No, we're installing right now. I've cruised all over the state of Ohio, and we installed Detroit. So it's just a matter of, uh, safety, crew safety, and not damaging the roof when we can install it, so. Typically, it's like, if it's less than thirty degrees, we don't go on the roof. Uh, other than that, if it's, if it's good to go, you know, and the guys are safe, uh, then we can install, so. As long as we, we get permit and an interconnection approval from DTE, we'll install.
And also, for us, there's a little bit of a time factor, because after December twenty twenty, the, um, the amount of tax rebate available to people willing to install solar goes down again by some massive percentage. And we don't wanna find ourselves in a position of not being able to afford to do this. Right now, we can afford it.
It's the end of the year, though.
End of, yeah, that's, so we have eleven.
You have time.
Um, I, I'm wrestling with this like everybody else, I think. You know, my, my struggle here is that, the, in my opinion, a little bit vague wording of, of, is it in the master plan?
It's in the, it's in the zoning ordinance.
The zoning ordinance, that, that, you know, this, what is it, inefficient or ineffective? And what that, what that means, right? So, so as I understand it, your problem that you're here today with is, is one of money. If you slapped another power wall in there, this is a non-issue. If you waited two more years to pay, get your payback, it's not an issue, right? Is that, am I understanding that correctly? If you threw more money at this problem, which we don't want you to do, obviously, does this issue of having to put the panels on the front of the roof go away?
Uh, I guess, I mean, that's a hard thing to answer, because we're, we're saying it's ineffective and inefficient because you're adding, you know, so much more time on getting, recouping your investment, and also, like, you added a whole nother power wall to the system, you're talking about another ten to fifteen thousand dollars. So it's like, wow, that's the whole reason we're saying it's in a.
Yeah, I, I guess my point.
If money's no option, sure, we don't, we could throw money away.
Yeah, yeah, my, my, I guess my point here is, is, and I think everybody's point, is that we, we approve plans based on the ordinance. It's, we don't take the homeowner's investment into concern. And that's, in effect, what you're asking us to do here. Um, and that's why I'm wrestling it. Now that said, my personal opinion, should we rewrite those ordinance to make it a lot easier to put solar? Absolutely, absolutely. But, uh, it's tough for us to, you know, we got nerves.
If we turn down, they still have an appeal to the ZBA, which could be.
Do they?
Yes.
Yes.
Anything in the zoning ordinance can be appealed to the zoning board.
So I gotta do this again?
That's an exception, right?
I didn't realize that.
Well, there's, there's, there's a couple schools of thought here that might help the situation. One is, um, is that you could table this impending information that we are not in possession of from the Environmental Advisory Committee. So if there is reports or studies or things that were done by the Environmental Advisory Committee, we haven't been privy to it, so we have, if there's, there may not be information that may be favorable to the Ahuvia family. And that's one thing. The second thing that you can do is too, is that you can always, um, take this up, take this under advisement, and then take up rewriting the solar ordinance. But I can't guarantee that that would happen within the twelve-month period that they need in order to get their, you know, in order to get their, uh, rebates.
Do we have any ability to, for lack of a better word, turf this to the ZBA? Is it, do we have any mechanism to?
No, the only way that it would go to the ZBA is that you would deny it, and they would appeal it to the zoning board of appeals.
When would that get heard?
March. And realistically, here, here's the thing, is that this was put in, uh, to come back to the planning commission. And part of the thought process, it meant, a lot of you were here. Sheldon, I know, was here when we did the, um, when we did the rewrite of the zoning ordinance. This came in with its own chapter, it's got its own number on it specifically for solar. So at that point in time, Ben Carlisle, who was Carlisle Wardman, and who was our planner, put in the language based on what information he had, and what he had heard, and what comments had been made. Having said that, that doesn't mean that things don't change from two thousand and eighteen to two thousand and twenty. So the, the problem becomes is, is not can we revisit this issue? Because of course we can. But can we do it in a fashion that's? but can we do it in a fashion that's timely enough to allow this particular family to take advantage of it? So the bottom line is, is that if she would like an answer tonight, we owe her an answer, or we owe her a table pending some more information to make further cause. Other than that, she can also get it, and if it doesn't pass tonight, she can apply to the zoning board of appeals. If you folks in your infinite wisdom decide, hey, you know what, we like this idea, we like the concept, we'll revisit the ordinance at a later point in time, but I see where she's going with this, and you decide to approve it because you feel that it is percentage-wise good enough for that to meet the criteria, then she's, then you say yes, and she is happy. So it's up to whatever it is, but it's always the first case coming through, which is the hardest, because that's a test case that sets the tone for what goes on behind it. But there are some options here.
So I want to ask one more clarifying question, and I know we're beating this to death, but this is new for all of us. Beyond, if we, if we ask you to move those eight panels from the front to the less effective side of the house, one problem with that is your return on investment goes from ten years to twelve, your payoff goes from ten years to twelve years. What else, what else is, what are the other downsides?
Yeah, the big drawback is the amount of power you have in the way, because...
More reliance, more reliance on the grid, essentially, right?
Reduced power generation.
Which means you'd have to tap into DTE.
Because of that ten percent annual reduction, most of that's in the winter, so like, it's getting hit really hard at that time.
And what is the offset of the amount of energy you are selling back into the grid? Like, how, because you're gonna produce, I think what I'm understanding is with, if you move the solar panels to the side, you don't have them on the front, you have a reduction specifically in the winter. It's worse in the winter because of snow, lack of snowmelt, lack of sunshine hitting that, whatever. In the summertime, you will still overproduce what you need even if they're on that side, is that a correct statement?
They'll still overproduce, for sure, just because of the size of the system compared to per annual usage.
Right.
But it's certainly not gonna produce as much.
Understood.
Yeah.
How much will that overproduction offset the lack of production in the winter?
It's hard to, I think, estimate, because, so they don't have a consumption monitoring, so all we see is consumption on a monthly scale. We can't tell if they're using that power during the day or at night, until we put that power wall in, and that's gonna track all the usage at any time. So it's hard to tell, you know, if they're not using any air conditioning, let's say, and the solar's producing a ton during the day, that's obviously gonna be a lot of excess they're sending back. But if they're using most of their power at night, you know, there's, so that's, we don't have a clear look on that, so it's hard to say the offset of what's getting sold back.
And how many, what are the, what are the months of the year that you're gonna take the hardest hit? Is it gonna be like December through March? Is it gonna be November through March, November through February? What are the, based on your experience with maybe other homes in a similar climate, what are the months you take the biggest hit?
So we typically put it into April to September, October to March are the two, like, sections that we can clearly isolate as when it's a lot of production for them.
And given the fact that it's Michigan, you know, could be anything.
Right, right. Well, we're in Cleveland, so, yeah, similar situation.
Never move in front of the house, only in the winter.
Sort of, because Cleveland gets hit with a lot of lake effect. So Cleveland is actually, I think, a harsher environment than Detroit is.
Yeah, we install up here, we even have systems up in Traverse City, all the way down to West Virginia.
Again, lake effect, snow versus, you know, like Cleveland and Detroit, not completely exactly the same.
No, I will say, though, the estimates are based off of this. So when we put in an address in those programs, it uses like the closest like airports, weather data, so it's not, it's not going off of Cleveland or anything like that.
All right, so, so my, so there's, so there's no way until the system starts operating to be able to quantify how much the overproduction in the warmer months will offset the underproduction in the winter months with the panels moved to the side?
Isn't that where that overall ten percent annually estimate's coming in?
Yeah, exactly, so the best we do before we install a system with consumption monitoring, which most systems won't even do that, but since they're having the power wall, they're gonna monitor how much they're using at every moment, what we, the best thing we can offer is looking at how much under they use each month, how much the system is estimated produced that month, and then we just, simple subtraction, and we're like, okay, this is your net that month, your negative hundred kilowatt hours, and then we multiply that at your generation rate, and this is your credit, and then go from there, so.
So you could actually kind of guesstimate
Yeah.
what that overproduction versus underproduction offset, you could actually...
Relatively accurate, yeah, but again, because it all depends on how much of that usage is during the day and at night, there is a range, obviously, it's gonna be...
Yeah, just a quick question is, how much do these panels weigh?
Forty pounds apiece.
Okay, so they're forty pounds apiece, so they're roughly, each panel is roughly half the weight of a bundle of shingles. So the garage...
It's about four, four pounds per square foot.
Okay, so the garage is not an option because of the condition that the garage is in?
Well, that's not the, the main reason...
Part of our issue, but in addition, there's...
That's one of them, the main reason is by, so with only putting five panels in a separate location, we would still have one inverter for the system, so the inverter is what's changing from DC to AC. So we have to obviously get back to that inverter, so now you have to involve a trench, which we always try to avoid, not only for the cost, but just because of the damage on the yard and everything. Or the other option without trying to avoid a trench, you can put another small inverter at that garage and have two separate systems basically.
Right, but that, you said, was completely cost, not cost-effective.
And here, since it wouldn't be tied to the inverter that's connected to the power wall, and now you're cutting out those panels from the grid out of it.
So I guess the thing is, is that the trench, how much were you figuring the trench cost?
Oh, we typically, it's around twelve dollars a foot is what gets charged to the customer. So here, I mean, we haven't even approached that, just because if we can't avoid it, we do, yeah.
You can only get five panels in the garage total?
On the two south ones. So if we just double it, it'd be ten, if we put them on the north, but it's the same boat, that's what we're in now.
But it's set so much farther back, and so much less visible, I think.
It's lower. What's that?
It's lower.
Right.
So if you look at sun, you know, sun coming in, a lot of it's, you know, some blocked.
But from our standpoint, I mean, I could live with that probably.
Easily, yeah. So how, what is the exact wording of the ordinance as it stands today?
The way that it says right here, separate non-integrated flush-mounted solar panels shall be located on a rear or side-facing roof, which do not front to any street, unless such installation is proven to be ineffective or impractical as determined by the planning commission.
I hate how vague that is.
That doesn't mean you can't determine one way or another.
Right, Dan, if you do, Dan.
You have options. That's what you say, isn't it?
The difference, the difference to this would be, one of the options would be is that if you denied it, and they go to the zoning board of appeals, and the zoning board of appeals overturns it, which is your right and is their right, then the zoning board of appeals would be sending a course of action for us to revise the ordinance. And if that's the pleasure, it's ultimately gonna come back to you. You could do that as well, I don't know that either of those helps her, the zoning, you to deny it and the zoning board of appeals to take it up would be her faster, would be faster for her if the zoning board of appeals overturns your decision, but they would have to overturn it.
But to me, the zoning board of appeals doesn't have any more or less authority on this subject than we do.
Well, the...
Arguably less.
They can disagree with the judgment that it's inefficient or impractical.
Right.
That's, that's in their purview.
That would be the crux of how that would, that would be the crux of how that...
Right, so it's giving them another shot, but they're gonna be a whole lot harder to get through this.
How much, how much, how much do we have to take into account? So whenever someone has a, you're having a, an addition on a house, a letter goes out to all the neighbors that says, hey, this is going in front of the planning commission, you've been notified.
I've had nobody comment on this.
Question is, did a letter go out to the people on that street?
Yes.
So they, so they have been notified?
Yes.
Okay.
In fact, two letters, because we missed the first month of this meeting.
Okay.
Right. But I mean, and I sent another one to someone to make sure everybody got an opportunity.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that that had been done.
Is the, is the city commission considering fixing this?
Well, I don't know that, number one, that has gone to the city commission, it would, you know, I mean, basically, what the normal course of business would be is that because it's in the zoning ordinance, it would come here and you would make a recommendation to the city commission. So having said that, the city commission would have the final say on it. But it wouldn't go necessarily to the city commission and then come back here unless it went to the city commission and they referred it back here for a public hearing for an ordinance change. So in any case, to change the ordinance, you're looking at months, it's not gonna happen overnight. To allow them their fastest thing, unless it's the pleasure of the planning commission to approve this this evening, then that's the fastest for her, assuming that's what the planning commission feels. The other alternative is, is it for the planning commission to deny it, and then they go to the zoning board of appeals with the appeal hinging pretty much on whether or not the efficiency of the system meets the task to overturn your decision. So I, that's kind of where you're at with it. Having said that, there's nothing down the line that prevents you at all from revisiting the solar ordinance.
Yeah, but as a practical matter in terms of providing the Ahuvias some opportunity to make a timely installation, and I think we do them the best favor either by A, approving it and deciding that it is impractical or inefficient to put it on the north side of the, I may have my directions funny, but on the north side of the roof, or deny it, and that gives them the opportunity to make a timely appeal to get whatever relief may be available. Okay, if they get turned down on both sides, they, they get turned down on both sides, there's, you know, I'm sympathetic, but I'm not about to ignore the ordinance, okay? And I recognize there's a judgment call as to what the percentages are, as to whether that's impractical or inefficient. I don't think practical is the, is the, maybe the garage is the impractical part, but that's not really on the table before it. So it's a matter of whether or not the ten percent efficiency loss and the seasonal nature of that loss, most of that hit comes in the winter months, okay? Is sufficient to call it a reason that makes it inefficient enough to justify placing the panels where they want to place them? That sounded terribly convoluted, but, but I think we've beaten this horse to death several times now, and I just think it's time for a motion up or down.
So I'm gonna take a swing at a motion. I am going to move to approve as presented based on the ineffectiveness of placing them on the non-street-facing roof.
I'm gonna second that.
On paper?
I...
Opposed? Okay, so now what?
Now that somebody can make an alternative motion to deny, and then if that motion to deny passes, then they would be free to go to the zoning board of appeals, because clearly from that vote, it's not the pleasure of the planning commission to approve that.
Move to deny the motion.
Second?
On paper? Opposed? Porta, porto three?
Okay, so...
So they gotta go taking appeal to ZBA?
Well, you don't have, you don't have a four, you don't have, you need five.
Oh, right.
You don't have five.
So you have to have five.
Well, it'd be pretty weird for us to switch our vote now.
Well, no, you wouldn't have to, I mean, the motion could change, I mean, there could be something that changes in a motion to do that. Otherwise, it dies for lack of a motion.
Right.
So the...
But the failure to approve has to be denied.
It is, in fact, I mean, I guess, you could take, yeah, you could take that and say that if you wanted to.
Say that again.
You could, you could do that, just say the motion to deny is...
No, motion to approve.
Motion to approve is a failure, therefore, the project's denied, but you had the opportunity to make another motion. Neither one of them has a whole lot of strength, but the first one, if you deny the motion to approve, then it fails. So the purpose of making another motion, an alternative motion, is to see if there's a difference in the motion that might sway somebody one way or another, and that apparently didn't happen. So I mean, they're free to go through that, so you don't have the definitive course, other than they failed the first motion, they would go to the zoning board of appeals.
So are we back to zero now, and it has to be remotioned?
No, the zoning board of appeals, no, the zoning board of appeals. It's just not going to the majority of them.
The approval having failed is a deny.
Okay.
Allow, at least, to read it.
I didn't know if our other failure to deny negated that.
Given Robinson's, you had, where you make the motion, it might make it more palatable to approve, and that wasn't what was forthcoming.
Well, there's potential.
Yeah, well, there's options, there's options for them, absolutely. So, I mean, if that's the case, and there's no other motions forthcoming, then the motion would have failed, and the...
Yeah, I don't know how to make that motion any more appealing.
This is not, this is not stopping them from their putting solar panels on every elevation other than this one.
Say that again?
Qualify for the winter, I think, if you're ineffective, not year-round, but during the winter when you have a thirty-five percent loss.
You said move the panels?
No, no, I believe we'd go with a motion that says that thirty-five percent loss in the winter is ineffective, and thus, we can't allow it based on it being ineffective by switching it to the other side.
Is that gonna change anyone's vote?
Yeah, I might.
At this point, you might as well let it go to the zoning board of appeals and see if there's a case to be made for it there.
I would personally like to see the zoning board of appeals take a look at it, and, and I, if we're gonna do something that's, and we're gonna, we're gonna keep the subjectivity, because that, the way the ordinance is written right now, it's incredibly subjective. And if we're going to move forward with solar, which I have no problems moving forward with allowing solar, it's just that it has to be that the ordinance is written to allow it without the, well, we might do it for this one, but we might not do it for that one based on what direction the house fits, the house spaces. And then the other thing that comes into my head is, you have, you have these ordinances, how does it affect things within the historic district? Because we're talking about Huntington Woods as a whole, not just pieces of it. So these are the other things that kind of go through my head.
But in terms of the application we have in front of us, I agree that those are valid, but in terms of the application we have in front of us, you know, we, we got what we got, and in terms of exercising judgment, we do that all the time in terms of aesthetic values, and that's, this is really an extension of that, it's ordered a little differently. But we do that with varying degrees of consistency from time to time, because that's what the planning commission does.
But aesthetics, and I'm not disagreeing with you, but aesthetics are something we're trying to, we're supposed to be trying to wash out of things, like when we, when you say that we, we look at, like, there are plans that we approve that, that I might think are aesthetically appalling, you know, because it's not my taste, but, but you make your decision based on the ordinance.
Yeah.
That's all. Can I, can I just say, like, I, I'm actually taken aback by this vote, it's not what I was expecting. And I just kind of feel like more than aesthetics are, are at issue here, and if I'm understanding Hank correctly, you've got the power within this body to write the ordinance according to how you want it to read, unless, unless I'm not...
That's incorrect, that has to go through a public process, there has to be a hearing. So that's why I was saying, it doesn't happen overnight, it takes months in order to do that.
And it would be planned here, go through the hearing, then it goes to the...
The city commission.
City commission, I'm not sure the city... I'm not sure the city commission.
Do citizens of Huntington Woods have available to them an ability to say, create a petition saying that we want to be able to go solar as a city? Is that realistic? I mean.
The issue isn't overgoing solar. The issue is what does ineffective or impractical mean within this zoning ordinance?
You have a right to put solar in the house, you absolutely have a right.
So the, the problem for us is that we're stuck with this and we view impractical and ineffective in whatever way we view it. And it's like a judge who's bound by a higher decision. We just don't have it in, some of us don't believe we have it in front of us to define that based on what's presented to us. But you have appeal rights.
So it's the zoning board that, that is the body that writes the ordinance?
No, the planning commission would write the ordinance. The zoning board of appeals interprets the ordinance. So the zoning board of appeals could interpret that you have a disparity and as a result, they could grant you permission to do this based on what the information.
In terms of ordinance production, typically the, the, either, we, we can raise an issue and send it to the commission, but we won't move generally on anything specific having to do with an ordinance until the city commission says, we want you to deal with this. And then they will ask us the whole public meetings and give comments as to drafting. Now, I, I don't, I'm not quite sure what the procedure is, but it seems to me that the citizens avenue is to present this problem to the city commission. Okay, but that, that's not, that isn't a timely kind of relief in your situation. Okay, and what there would, I, I imagine that there could be some citizen initiative to amend the zoning ordinance. But, but what that takes, I couldn't even begin to tell you what that is.
Hank, don't some of those issues come before us or at least start with the public participation?
Yes, absolutely. A lot of times what we would do is that then we staff would take a look at what it is and then see what the procedures are, see what the pleasure of the city commission might be. Do you take it in front of them, look for direction, that type of thing? And then go for that, like, you're going to have an amendment coming for you next month where we're going to do some corrective measures on the zoning ordinance where they have left some stuff in and not taken things out when we did adopt the new zoning ordinance. And I've discovered that there's conflicting or there's problems in having it in two areas of the ordinance as a whole. So we're going to be looking at that. I'll propose those next month, you'll hear them the following month. And as far as that, we'll hold a public hearing. So when I propose them, you set a public hearing. So we can propose a lot of things. We did something in the past which we were going to get to you next month, which is our, like, work list, if you will, for the year, where we have a priority list, things that the planning commission wants to accomplish. This could certainly go on the priority list if the planning commission wants to visit it. So more so what the planning commission does rather than do site plan reviews is actually plan. So these are things where we would put priorities in and, you know, like, high, low, medium, you know, medium priority. And this could fit on the list and it could be something that's taken up by the planning commission. When it's taken up by the planning commission, if it looks like it's going to be a long-term endeavor, it would be beneficial if we found out that the city commission had an interest in it prior to spending six to eight months of working on it and finding out that there's no interest in entertaining it. So, and I'm not saying that that's the case here by any stretch of the imagination. It's just a standard procedure for ordinances. So what I would suggest that they do is make their appeal to the zoning board of appeals. We could certainly take a look at that next month. I'll put it on a proposed priority list. Actually, Sheldon and I have had conversations about a priority list coming forward and we'll have it. It was like with 2018, we didn't really have a priority list because the zoning ordinance was the priority list. So we did that and then we clean up from that. So now we still have a little more cleanup to do on that, which will be high on the priority list because we can get that knocked out. But there's absolutely nothing saying that we can't revisit this.
When does the master plan review?
Next year. That's another thing too. A lot of times, our last master plan, which was done actually 2008, revisited in 2015, we didn't really get much into solar in the master plan. And part of the things with the master plan is that even though we won the award that year for the best master plan in the state of Michigan, things change and realistically, we're 12 years out from there now. And maybe we would look at some master planning for a solar or for a reduction of a carbon footprint and make some suggestions as to how to get there. That's entirely possible. Now bear in mind that that does not change the zoning ordinance, but they, hopefully would work in tandem.
I don't know if this is appropriate to even ask at this point. So I, I think I'm sensing on the commission that in general, we would have liked to move forward with the project, but I for one, I'll speak for myself, feel that, that my hands are kind of tied given the ordinance, the way that it's written and what was presented. And so we have effectively denied it that allows you to go to the zoning board of appeals. We could have also tabled it for more information and I don't know if that's still an opportunity. I don't know which is more likely to produce a positive outcome for, if, if either.
It, it doesn't really matter. I mean, it's going to be heard within two weeks of each other regardless. I certainly believe that any information they have forthcoming would always help us down in the long run and seeing what perhaps documentation the environmental advisory committee has undertaken, because we have none of that. And maybe perhaps that could spur some action or help us to rewrite the zoning ordinance or rewrite a portion of the zoning ordinance.
So I don't want to delay anything, but is it worthwhile to table it, asking for more information?
It's already been turned down.
So just, your next step is to go to the ZBAs. So that's, that's option A, right? Go to the ZBAs, which from what I'm hearing is, well, another option would be just installing all the other roofs, right?
Yeah, you can do that today.
You don't need, you don't need anything, you just get your permit and you could do that right away. You do not have to wait on that.
Okay.
You can leave an end open and connect should you get the zoning board of appeals.
Is this an option if we install, so the rest of the system besides those eight panels in question, we get that permit, so we get their battery system up and running? And then we can go through the zoning and potentially even rewriting the ordinance, which obviously could be months for those.
Of course you can.
Okay.
Absolutely. There's, there's nothing stopping you from getting a permit and starting that.
Assuming Aaron and I want to assume that financial risk. Because given what's going to happen over the winter and given that there's a possibility that the zoning board, zoning board would not overturn the decision here so that we wouldn't be able to put those panels on the front facing roof.
That is definitely a possibility.
But my question is.
Yeah, I don't know that it's worth it at that point.
And if we install like the 15 panels and then we're applying for the zoning appeal with just the eight, does that start a whole new process because now it's a whole different plan set?
No, you're, you're only here because of the panels on the front facing part of the street. The rest of the stuff you have by right. You can do that tomorrow, assuming you get a permit. And you're entitled to.
Okay, zoning appeals in March?
Yes, it's in March, but you would have to, I mean, you'd have to apply fairly quickly for it because that has to be advertised in a newspaper.
Oh, is that why they can't get into February?
Right, otherwise I would do that for them. Plus I'll be, I'll be off on my legal notice requirements as far as my mailers go.
Sounds like we have quite, quite a few things to talk about.
Right.
I appreciate all your time.
But you're getting encouragement to go to the ZBAs also.
Okay.
I hear that, I hear that.
All right, thank you.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, next order of business you have is the election of officers.
Okay.
There's one that's not listed there, which it also do the liaison to the zoning board of appeals. So.
Maybe he thought he was doing, and he just kept doing it.
So what I would suggest is you just take them in order.
Well, yeah, before we start, I'll, I'll throw out there that I'm happy to stay on the ZBAs and I'm happy to stay in chair. So, do we take a vote? All in favor?
I will nominate.
Somebody has to make a motion.
They have to motion to nominate.
I move that he stays as the chairperson and on the ZBAs.
Second.
All in favor?
Okay.
You can be vice chair.
Was our vice chair Martin?
By your acclamation.
It was? Would anybody like to nominate a vice chair?
Who's not here?
Jill and Blake.
Blake.
Get to Blake, he's never been here. Uh, does anybody want to vote, make a motion for a vice chair?
Would anyone like to put themselves forward as a vice chair? Would you like to do it?
Well, I was going to go back to putting the chair as the liaison and putting that responsibility solely with one person. I, I don't know if that's appropriate, but I'm also by saying that, saying that I'm the only one probably here willing to take one of those positions on. But the motion has already passed, so.
Yeah, I mean, I'm comfortable.
He can resign real quick.
There's a, there's a, there's also the vice president as well, the vice chairman. So I mean, somebody wanted to nominate, nominate him for the vice chair.
Would you like to be nominated as vice chair? I, I'm not going to throw it out there unless you want to do it.
Well, that's what he would have to accept the nomination.
Would you like to, I nominate the gentleman to my right as the vice chair. Because I forgot your name, Rick Pollard. It's been a really long week.
Do you have a second?
Uh, second, if he accepts.
If he accepts.
Because he's got to want to take it as first.
That, that, I'll take it on. Second, all in favor?
Don't move too fast.
Whoa, whoa. I second it.
That should come from somebody other than the chair.
Oh, sorry.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Congratulations, Russ. Other than, Mr. Chairman, nothing further.
No, public participation, anything else to add?
It's only Monday.
It's only Monday.
Last week never ended.
Okay, regarding the solar panels, the environmental board has been looking at rewriting the ordinance for over a year now. We have several different drafts, which we have not shared with anyone here simply because we haven't been able to agree on everything that needs to be placed into the ordinance itself to make it more efficient and also less general so that you have something that you can get your teeth into and know what you should be approving or what you shouldn't be approving and what will make sense so that others can, can go by it and do their home improvements based on something that's actually grounded in some reality as opposed to generalization. And one of the things that I just wanted to make sure that I understand as I go back to report to the environmental board is that one of the things that you guys would like to see would be more specifics. So something that would say a loss of efficiency of lots greater than a number or impractical, impractical because it's a burden that is something very specific. And that's, those are the things that I wasn't understanding in this whole discussion. Like, what's a burden to you guys? I, I, I didn't hear anything about that. Or what, what do you consider to be?
Or to change the language that doesn't have those specific terms in it.
Right, what would you like to hear?
Well, I'm, I'm, I don't know enough about solar panels to tell you what is appropriate or not appropriate. I've got enough trouble making aesthetic judgments, okay? You know, but in this case, we've got something that says we don't want them on the front of the house, visible from the street and, and that I can deal with and, you know, and, and I'm not as uncomfortable as some apparently with the inefficient, given the numbers that we were given here. So, but that's my judgment call.
So.
If, if the, if the commission, based upon public hearing and study and the rest of it, wants to pin it down to 10% or 22 and a half percent, I'll live whatever's there.
Certain season, so I'm hearing a lot of different things that could be added in. I just wanted to make sure that I understood that correctly.
Is to give clarity to staff and give clarity to, to, to the citizens who want to do it.
Correct.
So if, if Hank has to say no because this is what it says, then Hank's got grounds to do that and we have grounds to do that.
But you also get seven different opinions. I think that you could, I would love to see us look, start over, right? Maybe it doesn't even come to any port. Maybe you can stick solar panels all over your roof.
Well, that's definitely been a discussion. I don't think that, what, what we understood in terms of community objection to the solar panels had enormous amount to do with sun glare and having reflection into the windows of homes that were across the street. That what might have been the objections that were heard in 2018. That's come back repeatedly to us and in part of our decision. But we've since learned that these panels do not have reflections on them any longer. There's been a, there has been an improvement to that. Not only in residential, there's no glare at all, period. Commercial applications, there's definitely more laws about that.
Well, that kind of thing would have to be written into the ordinance.
Exactly.
In terms of the glare factor.
Well, yes, but you can't buy residential solar panels with glare. You can't buy them, the marketplace does not sell them. Already that's been taken care of. It's a non-issue for homeowner. It's only in commercial applications or street level applications. Like if you're driving on a highway or something and you have a solar panel field, those cause glare to the drivers and so that's a problem. And it's being addressed in other laws that have nothing to do with us. But I, I just wanted to make sure, there was a couple of other things that I thought that maybe we might want to address and that's rough weight of the panels. And another one was like power, the power wall? I mean, do you guys want to know specifically, like?
Those are cold things, those are building.
Yeah, that's what, I don't know enough, that's why I'm asking.
We're concerned with the exterior.
Right.
Okay.
So basically, they're going to look at aesthetics as far as the power wall or anything like that. And as far as cost, that's not going to be something that they consider. You can bring stuff like that up with the zoning board of appeals, but what I think the deal is, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that if this has gone on for a year and they've never seen any of it, they had no benefit of knowing what the EAC knows.
Right, we, we couldn't decide amongst ourselves. I mean, we've had so many different versions of how this is going to go. And knowing what we know now, I mean, it's taken us that long to actually educate an entire group of people, you know, to be able to put something in writing. And our first pass that we were going to present to actually you guys to look at actually got completely shot down when we started looking at their particular situation.
Would be the body that would hold public hearing.
Yes, exactly, and that was the whole point, is to be able to present something to you guys that made sense. What are you worried about? What do you need to know? And I just want to make sure when I report back that I have understood to the best of my ability what your concerns are because I don't want to misrepresent. The other thing, I wanted to ask if, if it's possible, I don't know if you guys can even do this, to have a representative to help us write this, to help us, we're a year into it, so why not? You know, why not combine forces and put something together that we can then present as a unified group?
I would talk to, I would, I would.
Talk to Amy or?
No, I would have to clarify that with the city attorney and also.
If we can actually do that?
So, yeah.
Okay, no, because I know.
One of the things, they would have no authority to do that.
And I'm not speaking, honestly, I'm not speaking as an environmental board spokesperson right now. I, I just said I'll be here and I'll report back. And I just want to be right when I'm reporting back.
I also think that we could clear a space for you as one of our agenda items, maybe not this next month or whatever, but we could clear where you could come in and tell us where you are with this.
Okay.
And having that, then they, then at that point in time, the planning commission might be able to offer some input. But, you know, with all due respect and understanding that this tonight is the first time they've had anything come before them for solar. So they're hearing about this for the first time really right now while the EAC may have had it for a year. So if this was something that you would like to come before the planning commission and discuss, I can, I can be the guy that puts it on the agenda, I can promise you it'll be well received, it'll be, I can't promise.
Hank just said.
We're going to be meeting in, on the fourth Thursday in February, so that will be.
So then for March, okay, so then for March, you can do that. And, you know, I mean, we can start getting a communication dialogue.
Nobody wants to be blindsided. We, this family came to see us at our last environmental meeting and we learned a lot from them. from them that we didn't know just from their perspective. And it really changed the scope and the bend that we were looking at. And we understood almost immediately that you guys needed to hear their, what their issues were and then get feedback. And that's why I'm here, just to get your feedback, so we'll try that March meeting one. Thanks, you guys.
Thank you.
Any other public participation? Public participation's closed, looking for a motion to a chair?
Move to a chair.
Second.
On paper?
Aye.
No.
Sheldon wants to stay here all night.
Sheldon, go home.